Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 19, 2012 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swanson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
First matter of business before the council tonight is the approval of the form of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, we approve the meeting agenda in this published form discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. Next, item four, adoption of the consent agenda. These are matters handled on a single motion basis unless someone on the council wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda. Member Bennett, I know you have one you want to have removed.
Yes, your honor, 4C.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, 4F, please.
4F. All right. For the balance of the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Moved and seconded, we approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of 4C and F. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. 4C, Member Bennett.
Yes, your honor, I understand that City Manager Neil has some comments on this.
Thank you.
I do thank you, Councilmember Bennett and members of the council. This is an item, as you all know, that's been working its way through a request for proposals process that started in the Energy and Environment Commission, worked its way through the city council for review, went back out into the marketplace and had, we had a number of proposals. We initially thought that we were going to be ready tonight to review the best value proposal with you after taking a look at some of the information that was included in the council packet and some of the background information to that. It's my opinion that the council would be better served by tabling this item tonight and staff then would take that information back and really bring you a better kind of side-by-side comparison between the best two proposals. You know, when you do a best value proposal, it's always very nice when the best value is also the lowest cost. That wasn't the case at this point, so we want to make sure that if we are going to go with a proposal that's not the lowest cost, we provide you with a better context to make that decision. So that's what I'm requesting of you tonight on this item.
All right, good, thank you. Would you like then a motion to table to a date to be determined by staff?
Yes, please. I think right now I would suggest that we've got a number of things that are queuing up for the July 17 meeting, so I would suggest to you that August 6 meeting is probably the meeting we'd like to do.
Member Bennett, want to move that?
Yes, your honor, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moved and seconded, we table the residential curbside recycling contract discussion to our August 6, 2012 meeting of the council. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Member Sprague, you had a question about 4F, which is the property coverage, proposed property coverage for the city for the upcoming year. I think Mr. Carroll is here to answer any questions. Mr. Carroll, why don't you stand by here and see what Mr. Sprague has for questions.
Yes, your honor. It says in the staff report that value of the property insured will increase by 16%. And I'd just like to get a little more information on the, I assume that's replacement value and how that went up.
It is replacement value, and I think we've struggled over the years with the actual
Mr. Carroll, before you get going too far, would you introduce yourself and give us your business address?
Sorry. Jack Carroll, and my business address is 8200 West 84th Street, Bloomington, I'm with Aon Risk Solutions.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. The values have gone up 16%, and the reason that they went up 16% is we have struggled, travelers have struggled with the values of certain facilities within the city of Edina over the course of the years, so they have engineered about five to eight of the major facilities, and they have done the square footage evaluation, they've used Marshall Swift, which is a service that provides square footage reproduction costs, and this year we had a fairly significant loss that's still in play on the dome. They took a close look at all the values and they came back and they said, "We believe that these eight or nine facilities are not at replacement cost," taking them to replacement cost was the reason the values went up that amount, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Carroll? Member Sprague, would you like to move the matter?
I shall, so moved.
All right, is there a second? Moved and seconded, we adopt traveler's bid for purposes of coverage for our insurance renewal regarding our property. Further discussion?
One more discussion.
Go ahead.
So, Manager Neil, in terms of the property evaluations, I know they came forward with those, does staff have any contrary, you know, market evaluations of the property? Do you feel that this is fair and reasonable value?
We do feel this, Councilmember Sprague and members of the council, we do feel these values are reasonable. We have, as you know, facilities that are somewhat unique in the world. We have office facilities, we have recreational facilities, we have garage maintenance facilities. We have a lot of different kinds of facilities. We feel this is a good value and a pretty good representation of what we have.
So accurate enough so that we get adequate compensation?
Definitely.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
One other quick question, Mr. Carroll. Attached to the property coverage or by some other means, is there business interruption insurance?
There is business interruption insurance. It's part of the property package.
All right, good, thank you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks, Mr. Homeyer, as well. Maybe he's already gone. There, there he is, poised to leave. All right, next, under the Special Recognitions and Presentations section, this is the presentations part of it, we've got Jim Eikten here with us from our auditors Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, and Radasevich, Radasevich and Company, MMKR. And he's going to present the results of the audit for the calendar year ending December 31, 2011. Mr. Eikten, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction, Mayor. Members of council, City Manager, my name is Jim Eikten. I'm the managing partner with MMKR CPAs, which is Malloy, Montague, Karnowski, Radasevich. We are the city's auditor. I'm here this evening to give you a presentation of the audit report for the year ended December 31, 2011. It is a requirement in state law that the city issue a financial statement on an annual basis, looks similar to this document, it's a significantly sized document, over 100 pages of information. The city does, is required to prepare that document on an annual basis and have that document audited by an independent certified public accountant, which is where I come in as the city's auditor. We, as part of our audit, issue a number of reports. They look like that, that provide information on what the auditor's role is and what our information in terms of the audit summary is. I do plan to go through that information through the PowerPoint as well as guide you through the documents. You'll see on the PowerPoint that one of the main roles of the auditor is to issue an opinion on your financial statements. We did issue a, an unqualified or a clean opinion on that financial statement as we have in the past. We do issue several other information and do have other roles. We are required by law to issue an opinion on the city's internal controls in compliance with regulations, both in the financial reporting area, but also laws and regulations as it relates to the various revenues or financial reporting items that the city receives. Also, the Office of the State Auditor requires us to issue an opinion on your compliance with Minnesota-specific laws and regulations. That particular guide is issued by, as I mentioned, the Office of the State Auditor. You're also required to have a single audit of federal awards if you receive more than $500,000 of federal revenue in any one year. That was not required this year. It has been required in the past, but was not required as you receive less than that minimum threshold. One of the other documents that I mentioned, that I distribute is a management report, and if you have that information, I'll try to follow along in it, but the management report is really a document that we present as part of our audit process that summarizes the audit results as well as provides a summary in a really a presentation format that you can get and read to give you some information on how the audit went. In that document, starting on page one, you'll see a summary of the audit results. As I mentioned, we did issue a clean opinion on your financial statements, by definition, unqualified opinion. We did not have any findings to report in the internal control area or in the compliance with laws and regulations, as I mentioned earlier. In the area of the state laws and regulations over Minnesota legal compliance, we did have one finding related to the timely payment of invoices. Minnesota state law requires the city and any government in the state to pay its obligations within 35 days of receipt of the services or the invoice, whatever came later. The city, as part of our testing, we did note items, three items actually, that were not paid within that 35-day window. Through various other investigations and other means, it was noted that these obligations did have valid reasons for not being paid within the timely basis, and those reasons can be many, which are maybe the piece of information or the piece of item that you ordered wasn't complete, or you ordered 35 items and only got 25, or something of that nature. But the documentation on the invoice in the accounting office did not document why, so it was, we were unable to determine that without actually asking more questions. So the city, in terms of that audit finding, is putting corrective action place to improve the documentation so that it's noted when items are paid more than 35 days from the receipt of the invoice as to why that is occurring. Really, overall, not a major finding, but a finding nonetheless. In terms of audit results, this is an excellent audit result, very minimal findings and really no significant issues to merit additional attention. In my management report, we go into other areas. Certainly, you'll find formal required communications regarding the audit process. You'll also note that we provide information that the timing of the audit was completed based on state law within the required timeframe. It is required the city to submit its audit report by June 30, 2011. It is also important to note that traditionally, at least since I've been the auditor, that we've presented at the city council meeting in July, and I'm here in June. So the audit has gotten done faster this year, and the information in terms of the audit report is being distributed earlier than past precedents in terms of the audit. My management report also goes into information on really what I would define as the second part of the audit. The first part of the audit being, how are you complying with all the laws and regulations? The second part being, how are you doing financially? We start with some information on property taxes. All cities statewide are dealing with really some of the declines in the taxable market values of their properties. The city of Edina is no different. You'll see that in this particular chart, the taxable market value has declined in terms of the city, overall city, roughly 5.2% in fiscal 2011, and that compares to an overall decline statewide of 5.7%. So you're slightly below the declining market values. How that's impacting some cities and in the city statewide is tax rates are obviously needing to increase if your market value is declining, this is a general statement, if you are going to keep the same level of property tax revenues. So you can see in this particular presentation, you'll note that average tax rate statewide has increased per city governments to keep the same level of property tax revenues. The city of Edina's has increased significantly less than the overall tax rates. In total, you'll also note that the total tax rates, both by the city and overall, are significantly less than the average tax rates statewide and in the seven county metro area. How that relates to the audit in terms of revenues, you'll see a presentation on page eight of the management report, which shows governmental revenue, governmental revenues on a per capita basis. You'll see the property tax revenue is the most significant portion of your revenues and in your governmental funds. Remember, governmental funds includes general funds, special revenue funds, all your debt funds, and your capital funds. You'll see, even though your average tax rate is below average, based on the makeup of your city's property and the market values that you have, you are generating more than average in terms of revenues on the property tax per capita. Some noteworthy items as it relates to 2011, you'll note here that licenses and permits are increasing. We're seeing that in many cities in the metropolitan area as the economy starts to grow and get better, you're seeing additional revenues in license and permits area. Also, you'll note that intergovernmental revenues did decline in 2011, and most of that had to do with municipal state aid funding, which is mostly for streets, street improvements, and that can fluctuate each year based on the projects that the city has. On page nine of my report, you also note a presentation on the flip side of that, which is the expenditures on a per capita basis. Traditionally, the city's expenditures on a per capita basis have been higher than the statewide averages, most notably because the city has a full-time fire department which drives some of the costs in the public safety area, which you can see there. I think the most important probably element of this particular presentation is that you'll note that overall in the expenditure area, in the current area, that overall expenditures have actually declined on a per capita basis in, from 2010 to 2011, and frankly, only rose about $2 in 2010. So the city's overall expenditures on a per capita basis are going downward, which is somewhat different than what we're seeing in most of our clients in terms of overall expenditure areas. I also want to point out, and I think it's most important also as part of this presentation, is the levels of debt service. You'll see in 2010 as well as 2011 that the average debt service per capita is less than the averages statewide, which is important for managing the overall debt of the city. We also get into information on the general fund. You'll note that in the general fund, on page 10, did have a slight increase in fund balance at the end of the year. It increased about $594,000 from prior year. The city does have, and this is a very important item of note, is you do have a formally adopted fund balance policy. The policy drives the desired range of your fund balance. That particular policy establishes a goal of anywhere between 42% and 47% of subsequent year's budgeted revenues. At the end of the year, this particular presentation reflects a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures of about, well, not of about, of exactly 54.6%, which is above the range in your policy. It does leave roughly $1.6 million of fund balance above that range. Now typically, you know, that particular number gets utilized as part of future budget analysis, and administration provides some information on the use of that funds or, I guess, the analysis of that funds as we look forward into the future. Some of the items that's important as it relates to the general fund, the general fund revenues were above expectations, both in the charges for services area, in terms of permits. I mentioned that intergovernmental revenue revenues you'll see are a little bit above budget, both in the youth sports grant area. Charges for services were above expectations, mainly in the area of ambulance calls. So the general fund revenues were above budget, which is what many cities are experiencing in the metropolitan area. In the expenditure side, you'll note that expenditures were actually less than budgeted. A perfect world, when it comes to audit, revenues above budget, expenditures less than budget. By about $730,000. You'll note that here that probably the most notable item on this particular page is in the area of general government. General government was less than budgeted mainly in salaries and individual salaries and personal service costs being less than budget. In the area of public safety, that was, again, probably the flip side in terms of personnel services being higher than what was projected. So we also do some information on other funds. Certainly, the city has a significant number of what I would define as, which are defined as enterprise funds. Probably the most significant enterprise fund is the utility fund. This particular presentation, which is on page 13 of your report, shows the utility fund revenues and expenditures and then operating income after interest as a reflection of how well it's doing in terms of the bottom line. You can see over the last five years, the utility fund is operating quite well. The revenues for the year were, did increase mainly as a result of an increased rate during 2011. Another fund that's doing very well is the liquor fund. The liquor fund is experiencing gradual growth, actually, I won't even say it's gradual, good growth. It's increased its sales over the last five years by about 15%, and that's important considering you can see that the bottom line continues to be a positive. Even with the increased growth, the gross profit percentages of the liquor fund continue to be quite consistent, anywhere between 26.3% to 26.8% of sales, which is quite consistent in terms of the operating results. On top of all that, the actual operating expenses of the liquor fund actually went down in 2011, which is fantastic in terms of operating results. As we look through these other funds, I'm not going to go through each one individually. Certainly, the administration does an excellent job of monitoring the utility funds. There are some continued analyses that's taking place by administration that you'll see as you move forward and probably already have seen. You know, certainly, the golf course fund is one that's experiencing some declines in revenues that they continue to monitor. The arena fund had some recent improvements that are causing expenses to increase, most notably in the depreciation area of those improvements. And then lastly, the city has a Edinburgh Park/Centennial Lakes Fund that, for 2011 anyway, was a combined fund that is going to be separated out in 2012, and so you'll see some information coming through from administration on how those are functioning individually. But you can see certainly some, an area of, I won't say concern, but an area of, based on the green line, some operating losses that could be adjusted or monitored and reflected in terms of some of the information you're getting. So in my management report, we also go through some other accounting updates. Those are important in terms of GASB accounting changes. I'm not going to get into all those, but through the years, you've seen some significant accounting changes, and this year is no different. There was an accounting change through the city implemented GASB Statement 54 on fund balances. It changes the definition of fund balances from unreserved and unrestricted to assigned and committed and a number of other definitions. But our report does identify other accounting changes that potentially might impact you, and if you want to look at that information, feel free, and if there's any questions, I can answer those down the road. But in summary, that's the end of my presentation. We did issue a clean opinion on the city's basic financial statements. We did not have any findings in internal controls. We did have the one finding, one minor finding in the testing of Minnesota legal compliance. As part of my audit, I noted the city does an excellent job of assessing and improving its internal controls. There's continued monitoring and changing of controls to improve the system. I did mention the financial results in the city's general fund were improving, and also noted that the city does an excellent job of assessing its financial projections and looking towards the future, which from the city council standpoint is important because if I can't say that to you today, that the city's administration can provide information that you can rely on to make informed decisions, that's an important statement that I need to make, and I'd make that to you here. And lastly, we found the financial records to be in excellent condition, which, again, is an important statement to make at the end of my presentation. So that is the end, and I certainly will stick around here to answer any questions that you might have.
In terms of kind of singing the praises of people around here, I want to congratulate the city manager and all the staff, and particularly our Director of Finance, John Wallen, and Assistant Director, Eric Raghaman, sitting back there in the third row, who are instrumental in helping run this city and run it so well, to help us keep our double AAA bond rating, and the work that you've done certainly affirms what we observe all year long in terms of the work that they do and how they go about the process during our budget of trying to make sure that we meet budget, and it's often the case where we, revenues exceed those projected and expenses are less than those projected, and we end up in a pretty good position at the end of the year, even through the Great Recession. So keeping a city's double AAA bond rating all the way through the recession is a pretty remarkable thing in the United States these days, and we've kept it, and we're proud of it. So it's all these people on our city staff that help make that possible.
Questions for Mr. Eikten?
Page 20 of the book that you were going through. There's been a change in restricted and unrestricted between 2010 and 2011. Does that change at all affect how anyone would look at us for bond ratings?
The page that you're looking at, the question relates to is the entity-wide information, so they take, the financial statements from a fund base get rolled into an entity-wide statement, and then they get reported as either unrestricted or restricted.
Right.
Or in this case, there's also a category called invested in capital assets. And typically, when the change here relates to taking unrestricted dollars and actually investing them in capital improvements.
Right.
So that's typically what you would see there.
Which is what that looks like to me, but it's a significant change.
It is a significant change, but does it change the reader's overall analysis of the financial well-being? Probably not.
Okay.
It does, it reflects that the city spent some money on its infrastructure or whatever other capital equipment, but no, it wouldn't have any effect.
Member Sprague?
Thank you, Mayor. Next page, on page 21, is a statement that says, "It also shows that, for the most part, the city's business-type activities are generating sufficient program revenues to cover expenses." Are you talking about in the aggregate? Because as I look at the individual entities, I don't see that to be the case across the board.
Right, in the aggregate, it does, when you take a look at the total business-type activities. But there are individual activities, specifically the golf course and the community activity centers, which is really a multitude of, I mean, actually an aggregate of several individual ones, that do, are reflected as a deficit. This particular page, again, is kind of the entity-wide perspective and reflects kind of a bottom-line perspective on, is the city getting healthier? Is it getting more financially well or not? And you can see certainly by the bottom line, the change in net assets is certainly a positive and actually a significant positive in this case. But there are individual areas that are not functioning that are driving it to the negative, and those community activity centers would be the one that stands out the most.
So on the business activity side, you're saying, system-wide, in the aggregate, we are generating more revenues and expenses, but what about on the capital side? Is that evaluated? Because if you look at the enterprise system?
Right.
I don't believe that it's funding itself for capital improvements.
On the, in this particular presentation, it does take, it pulls out the capital asset piece?
Okay.
And only utilizes depreciation as a function of expense.
As the operating side, okay.
Yep. So you'd have to look at the individual funds to get an answer to that question. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Eikten? Or for John Wallen or Eric Raghaman? Member Bennett?
I didn't receive this until this evening, and I anticipate having some questions once I've had a chance to review it. May I raise those at another time?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I will briefly discuss that. If you note in the agenda, it does reflect, I forget the word, with use, John, except or what is it, receive. And it's an important word, I guess, in the standpoint of an audit. The audit is actually approved by administration. The administration approves the audit, so you're really receiving it as a city council, and I understand that you might not have received that. I'm always available for questions. My number is in here. You can at any time call me, or you can direct your questions through City Manager's office, and I can answer them at any time. Feel free to give me a call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eikten. Is there a motion to receive the comprehensive annual financial statement for the year ended December 31, 2011?
So moved.
Moved and seconded that we receive the CAFER, as it's called, for the year ended December 31, 2011. Further discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed, say nay? Carrie.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Thanks, Mr. Reichton. All right. Now, we've got a series of public hearings this evening, some very interesting topics. And two of the matters deal with conditional use permits, and one's a public right-of-way vacation request, and then we also have an administrative penalty appeal. But first matter is five, six A, excuse me, and that is a public hearing regarding the proposed issuance of a conditional use permit to construct a new home one foot above the first-floor elevation of the existing home at fifty-five thirty-seven Park Place, Resolution Two Thousand Twelve dash eighty-four. Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This first property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city, close to the Minneapolis border. It's on Fifty-S sixth and Park Place. It's the corner lot, it's the northeast corner of the intersection. The applicant is proposing to, well, this is a picture of the existing, well, not existing anymore, the home that did exist on the property. It's been torn down. The site is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to construct a new home as pictured on the screen. In designing the home, the applicant has tried to fit it into the character of the neighborhood. Can note here that the ridge line of the house is thirty feet tall. The city code maximum is thirty-five feet. Have tried to bring the lines of the roof down to fit into the character of the neighborhood. This lot sits lower than the adjacent property. The location of the new home would be in the general same vicinity as the previous home. One change would be that the access would be off of Park Place, where the previous home gained access off Fifty-S sixth Street. This is a rendering of the rear of the house. Again, you can see that thirty-foot measurement to the ridge line or the top of the house. This is a look at the existing lot as it sits today with the previous home removed. This was reviewed by the planning commission at our last meeting, and they are recommending approval of this project. Of the four conditions that are outlined in the staff report, two of the four must be met, one of condition one through three, and always the fourth condition. That fourth condition is that it must fit the character of the neighborhood. And the one provision that is met here of the first three is that there's a groundwater issue associated with this lot. As documented by ITCO Allied Engineering, there's a groundwater level of eight fifty-five point twenty-nine, and they're recommending an eight fifty-nine point twenty-nine for the low-level elevation to avoid those water issues. So, that said, the home would raise an elevation of three point seven five feet higher than the first-floor elevation of the previous home, so therefore, the conditional use permit that's requested. So, it does meet that condition number two. And the condition four is, does it fit the character of the neighborhood? I'll just quickly show some slides of some of the homes in this neighborhood. It's a variety of story-and-a-half, two-story homes, and the elevations in the area varies quite a bit as well. Larger two-story home, another two-story. There's some Ramblers in the neighborhood as well. You can kind of see the home here in the background or the lot that we're looking at. Again, back here, this is a good slide where you can see the elevation change, changes from lot to lot. With that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of this conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report and the resolution.
The planning commission recommendation was unanimous, if I recall correctly.
It was.
So, what they're really doing is asking to be two point seven five feet over the one foot of allowed city code in order to deal with this water issue. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Member Swenson.
So, what does that give them for a ceiling height in the basement? And does everyone use eighteen-inch trusses now in building a basement ceiling? And are we always going to come across that every time we look at increasing the elevation for the threshold because of that issue?
Yeah, that does seem to be standard these days. The builders here can speak to that issue with more expertise than I. But the ceiling, or the ceiling elevation in the basement is proposed here is eight point seven five feet in height. Minimum building code is seven feet. Typically, in Edina, we do see eight-to-nine-foot basement height for ceilings. We do even on occasion see ten-foot ceiling height for basements. So, this seems to be reasonable at the eight point seven five, within that eight-to-nine range.
This was the first house that my husband ever lived in. It's the house that his parents built, so it's kind of interesting to drive by it now and see it gone. It was small, and I talked to him about it, and he moved when he was six, so he couldn't even tell me what the basement was like. But I knew that there weren't a lot of basements built in that area, especially the one to the east of it because of...
That's right.
The water table. Okay.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
A question about the orientation of the house. The house that was there, and the reason for my question is that the address is Park Place, yet the only part of the house that's on Park Place is the garage. Was that true, the house that was there as well? Is it was sitting sideways?
It is. The house did face Fifty-S sixth Street, was addressed off of Park. That would continue to be the case, with the exception that the driveway would now be off Park Place.
Okay. So, the driveway was on Fifty-S sixth as well before?
It was.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
We've got a resident expert on the former property here.
Yeah. I get it. It's just unusual.
All right. Other questions for Director Teague at this point?
I do. I have just a broader policy question. So, are we kind of creating a situation where, if you're in a floodplain, you get to build a bigger basement ceiling than other people not in the floodplain? Or are most of the other homes being built that you come across also staying within our height range in building nine-to-ten-foot basements?
They are. They are staying within that one-foot range. It's only when there's a groundwater issue or a floodplain issue that requires the conditional use permit that we need to bring forward. But I think that one-foot rule is working.
Okay. So, to put them on par with non-floodplain, it's really more than a foot that they need to get that market, a basement that supports what the market's demanding out there?
I think that's true.
Okay. Thanks.
Member Bennett.
To follow up on Member Sprague's question, in cases where there is not a water table issue, they would be able to simply dig the foundation lower, correct? If they wanted that ceiling height? Thank you.
This is kind of Carino redux.
That's the reason that we have this ordinance. Previously, this would have been reviewed under the variance process, and it wouldn't have come before the city council.
Okay. I don't know who is making the presentation on behalf of the proponent for the conditional use permit, but... Seem to be Mr. Bousin coming forward, and his client, I take it? And we're thinking about ten minutes. I got word that the planning commission, that was about the right amount of time for you, so let's think about ten minutes for your presentation.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to listen to our conditional use permit application. I'm Scott Bousin with Gray Neighborhood Homes. I'm here with Kate Schmidt, who's the owner. Grew up in Edina and looking forward to moving back into the community with her family. One of the things we did when we looked at this property, and you could see in the staff report, is that we worked hard to study the character of the neighborhood. We surveyed twenty-eight adjacent properties and checked their ridge heights. We found out that it really is an eclectic neighborhood. You've got Ramblers, you have Colonials, American cottage-style homes, a lot of different homes, and also, it is a neighborhood in transition. Older homes, new homes, homes being remodeled. It's a very eclectic neighborhood in Colonial Grove. And we found of the twenty-eight homes that we studied within the adjacent block, block-and-half area, that the average ridge height was like twenty-seven point one four. You had homes that were, ridge heights were as low as fourteen-nine, and some that were as high as thirty-five. So, we wanted to design the home within that envelope so that even though we were asking you to allow us to raise the first floor, we're still keeping our ridge height within the envelope character of the neighborhood. So, if you look at the study, we did a survey, there's eleven homes that'll still be higher than our home, and eighteen homes that will be within ten percent of where we're going to be. So, I think we really worked hard to try to get the home to fit in from a height and scale standpoint, and also with the design of the home being a cottage-style home, using shingle, stone, chimney elements you'd find in the neighborhood, so the home will be really a great addition to the neighborhood as well. And we're also sensitive, the homes adjacent to our home, the home to the north on Park Place, and also the home to the east. Our homes are more kind of the Bloomberg, Ramler, Cape Cod homes, which do have, you know, lower ridge heights. The home directly across the street on Fifty-S sixth and the home across the street on Park Place are both much more in that thirty-foot height range. So, we're right in the middle of that eclectic mass of the neighborhood. But what we did do, you know, we're working with Kate and Eric, is we came up with a plan whereby, you saw the presentation on Fifty-S sixth, the house is a great look as you drive by there, but the lowest home on the east side, we had our eve line come down the farthest, so that they're, they've only got about a ten-foot eve line coming down there. So, they're looking from their house up at a roof that's going away from them. We thought that was important so that, you know, they would not be compromised with their sightlines there. So, I think it's really important, you know, like you talked about, that we keep the character of the neighborhood, that when we ask for things like this, that we're, you know, building the home, even though we are going up, you know, you can see we're well below the zoning code as far as our height on our scale. You know, and really, we love to build it at the height or one foot above the old home. It's just that, you know, we are, we did soil borings, and we hit water at eight feet prior to the May weather. So, imagine, that's why they've got that, they want that lowest floor four foot above your water table per FHA building practices, so that allows for seasonal fluctuations, like I'm sure if we went and drilled this week, that would have come up a little bit. So, we just think it's an important thing to do for, you know, long-term durability of the home, the home more satisfaction, but then leave behind a home that does fit in, that, you know, enhances the character of the neighborhood, so...
No, I'm just, like Scott said, I'm happy to be back with my family now. I was on Kellogg, right in that fifty-three-hundred block in Oaklawn and then Gulf Terrace, so I'm just hoping we can build a home that's safe for our family and to be in the basement in. So, thank you.
Scott, your garage elevation, I think, is eight-six-six point seven, and your threshold is eight-six-nine point oh five.
Yes.
So, you did drop the garage side down because you don't have a basement or anything.
Right.
It looks like in the plans underneath it.
Yep. Where we could drop it, we did bring that down, so they're going to have about, you know, five or six steps out of that garage. Also, that'll allow for a lighter elevation from Park Place to the house.
That was a good plan. I like that. Thank you.
Thanks.
And if you build a Bloomberg house, you have to put in paneling, and he really likes water features inside of his house, too.
And curved walls.
Yeah. And curved walls, yes.
Other questions for Mr. Bousin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the benefit of the listening audience, can you talk more about ridge line and what that means?
Well, you know, we built several homes in Edina, you know, especially the urban areas, tighter East Edina areas. We have a neighbor meeting like we had for this house, and they always, the first question out of their mouth is, how high is the house and what's the ridge line? And the ridge line is one of the elements of mass, and I think it's the one thing that we definitely get judged on, the height of the home. And with smart building techniques, we are able to design the home so the second story is built into the roof line. So, we've got a truss that's designed to, you know, bear the weight of the roof, sit on the outside walls, but the room is built inside that truss rather than just build, you know, a second-story wall and then just put the truss on top of that. Well, the truss, the room inside of that upper-level truss, so that it does, we're able to bring that ridge line down. And then what else allows us to do is bring the eve lines down. So, if you can get the, you get the first, the front door threshold down, get the eve line down, so when you're looking at the house, that peak, which is highest point, is as far away as it can be, and your eye goes to the most character plane, which is the front and the eve line. So, if you can kind of push it down like that, that's how you create, it's not, you know, it's sort of an illusion, but it really is the reality of the second floor built into the trusses.
Okay. And then, in terms of, so this house will be facing Fifty-S sixth?
Yes.
Okay. And then, as you go in north from there, the house is turned and then towards Park Place. So, for me, the important comparison was the house adjacent facing Fifty-S sixth. And what's the ridge height of that? That would be fifty-five thirty-six.
Fifty-five thirty-six Park Place?
Yeah.
Fifty-five thirty-six Park Place is at...
Two point one.
That's at twenty-nine-nine.
So, very close to the...
Yeah, he's actually, his, all the houses, all the homes around are high up. We put a marker point, so you could see, we put a bore, you can see, here's the old house, here's the new house, and the homes to the north go, it's up in the air more, so that our newer heights even is not much higher than the home to the north.
So, it's uniform on both corners, is what I'm trying, getting at?
Yeah. It's just the one, the one house to the east does continue to stair-step down...
Right.
As we go towards the creek.
Yep.
Whereas like the house to the west across Park Place is almost ten feet higher. So, we are, you know, you're going to, it's kind of going like this.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Bousin? Member Schmidt? No. Okay. Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to open this matter up as a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and comment or raise a question with the council, feel free to do so. It'd be best to use one of the side podiums. Make sure you give us your name and address, and then you will have three minutes. You'll get a warning light at thirty seconds. The yellow light will go on, and you can think about wrapping up your comments. We're strict timekeepers here, so... Anyone wish to come forward and testify regarding this matter? All right. I'm not seeing anyone standing and coming forward or acknowledging that they want to testify. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, we close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, say nay? Carrie. All right. Is there a motion relative to this matter? Member Swenson.
I'd like to move this matter. I think he's been very sensitive to the neighbor and the surrounding houses. I like the fact that his garage is lower, where he's lowered it when he can, but he's taken advantage of being able to raise the corner of the house so that the basement actually has a window out, and I would support this, so I move it.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay? Carrie, you've got a beautiful homecoming here, Miss Schmidt. Thank you for doing this in Edina, and we're glad you're just moving a little ways in town, so somebody else is good to enjoy your home, I'm sure. So, good luck with everything. Thank you, Mr. Bousin. Next matter is six B, and that is another proposed issuance of a conditional use permit on a property located at forty-eight oh five East Sunny Slope for the Powers family. Director Teague, you have this matter as well.
I do. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is very similar to our last request, a conditional use permit under that same provision of the code. This property is located just west of Country Club on the Minnehaha Creek. This is a look at the existing home, which is still on the site today. The applicant is proposing to tear this home down and construct a new home that would generally look like this. This was a rendering that was submitted to the planning commission. The plans have changed slightly, and I will get to that in a minute. Again, here's the subject property with Minnehaha Creek coming in that location. This property is actually located within the one-hundred-year floodplain. The, kind of the reddish area indicates that one-hundred-year floodplain. So, because of that, they again need to raise the basement to be at least two feet above the floodplain per Edina ordinance. The existing home does not meet that condition today. So, as a result of that, the request is to raise the new house four point six eight feet above the existing first-floor elevation, or three point six eight feet taller than the code allows. The ceiling height in this structure is roughly eight feet, ten inches, so again, within that eight-to-nine-foot range that we typically do see in Edina. So, when looking at the four criteria again with this project, this one meets condition number one, in that it's located within that floodplain that causes the need to raise the house. So, the fourth condition is that consistency in the neighborhood and does it fit the character? Again, the planning commission reviewed this and did find this to meet the character of the neighborhood. The vote on this one was six-two-one. The issues that were raised, this is a... The issues that were raised, this is a look at generally what the house will look like. This one is 40 feet to the ridge line, which is the max of what the code allows, so 40 feet to the very, the top of the roof. But they have designed the roof, again, to be scaled down to give it more of a story-and-a-half look, as indicated on the, on the screen. So the issues that the planning commission dealt with had to do with grading of the property and the elevations, in particular, I thought I had a... Well, we'll get to the elevation in a minute. We'll just quickly go through some of the existing homes in the area. Again, this is another neighborhood similar to the last one with varying elevations and varying home styles. This, this picture on the screen here, this is the existing home closest to the subject property. Notice that the garage on this side, this is the closest point to the home. It would just be, just off the screen to the right. So again, a story-and-a-half. There are two-story homes in the area, little bit larger lots than a typical Edina lot. Here's a Rambler, another two-story. So this is the site plan that was looked at by the, by the planning commission. The concern had to do with the, what they called a auto automobile court. It was a side-loaded garage here, and in order to, to make that turn for cars, a five-foot retaining wall was proposed right along the lot line. The other concern was that there was no elevation originally provided in the packet from Minnehaha Creek. The applicant did submit that at the meeting. Again, it's, it's very similar to the, the front side. But the primary concern was in this location here. So the applicant has worked with that neighbor to the north and have come up with an alternative plan that was placed before you this evening. What that is, is a front-loaded garage, so they've pulled that, that drive court away from the lot line, so it would just be a straight-in driveway entry into the home. So the closest point of the driveway in this location here is actually 20 feet from the lot line, and the closest point of the, the home would be 30 feet away and does provide area to provide landscaping, and there's no retaining wall with this, with this new proposal. It would just grade into the side of the hill here. So with that revised plan that they've worked out with the, with the adjacent neighbor, staff and planning commission also again recommended approval of this. It would be subject to the resolution that was placed before you, and the change that was made to that was the notation for the plans that were submitted this evening. So with that, I can stand for any questions, and the applicant has some more pictures of, of these revised plans as well.
Thank you, Mayor. In the previous presentation, the applicant had provided a table of ridge heights in the adjacent area. Was that provided with this at all?
I...
Comparatively?
Yeah, I don't believe they did a, a actual measurement to the, to the ridge lines, but they did provide all those photographs that demonstrated the difference, the different homes in the neighborhood.
Okay, and in your opinion, is this in sync with the average ridge line or within the, the range of the average ridge line?
Well, this one goes right to the maximum of, of 40 feet, which is the maximum allowed by code.
But is that, is ever, is the majority of people in the neighborhood maxing out to that ridge line, or is this...
Yeah, I don't know exactly, but I would, I would say there are several in the, in the neighborhood that probably go to the max, if not over the maximum. These homes were built before that city standard of 40 feet to the, to the ridge line. That ordinance is about two or three years old.
The topography is really varying in this neighborhood, too. There's a lot of hills and so ridge line, I think, is only comparative when you look at the homes closest to this home, to be honest.
Adjacent, is what you're saying? Okay.
Yep.
Questions for Director Teague?
I have a question.
Member Bennett?
Just to follow up on Member Sprague's question. Your answer was 40 feet, which is code, but that's only in certain areas, is it not? And so just for clarity on the record, where does that apply and where does the maximum height of 35 feet apply?
Yeah, that's correct. It's only for lots, I believe it's over 75 feet in width, that can go up to that maximum. In areas in town where there are smaller lots, it's a sliding scale, again, based on the width of the lot, starting at, or the maximum to be to 35 feet.
Other questions for Director Teague at this time? All right, thank you.
Just to be clear, we are now discussing the revised plan as the final one, or are you offering me a choice, us a choice between the two?
No, we're suggesting that the revised plans be what, what you consider...
With the front-loading garage?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is Mr. Wissink here and the Powers family? We have Doug and Abby Power. Excuse me, didn't mean to put an S on the end there. Welcome, folks.
Good evening. Well, we can, this is Doug and Abby Power.
And Nate, we'll, we'll give your group about 10 minutes, just like we did with the prior group.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Yep, so this is Doug and Abby Power, and Doug and Abby Power are recent transferees to Edina in the last year, and so I just want to have them introduce themselves and their family.
Good.
Oh, thanks. So I'm Doug Power, this is my wife, Abby. We recently moved here from Chicago, so we're new to Edina. We moved here last August. We moved here so I could take a job at General Mills, which is going very well, and we're renting a house right now on Drexel, so we've been here for about 10 months or so, and we're really enjoying Edina. And it's one of the reasons why we have been looking for a piece of property that we could build our family's house, so we could stay here for a very long time. We love the Sunny Slope area, and we found this, this piece of property, and we're really excited to hopefully be able to, to build on it. So we're happy to answer questions, and hopefully we can do it, you know, build the house we want.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Power. Standby on, on your invitation for questions. We'll have Mr. Wissink make his presentation. Would you give us your full name and business address, please, Mr. Wissink?
Sure. Nate Wissink, and business address is 1-8312 Minnetonka Boulevard, YZ. So we're a division, Elevation Homes is a division of Streeter and Associates. We're a custom home builder that's been doing work in the Twin Cities metro area for about 27 years. Elevation, the division was started about six years ago. Most of our work has actually occurred in Edina, and the style of the home that the Powers are hoping to build is in keeping with, I believe, some of the images that you guys have seen in the package. So it's an East Coast shingle-style home, very reminiscent of classic architecture, timeless architecture, and that is really what the hope is here. And similar to what Scott Bouson had said, the idea behind the structure in the home is really to have a story-and-a-half home, so to bring the second floor of the home or the, the living space in the second floor of the home to be captured in the roof space. And so if you look at how we oriented the overall design, that's, that's in keeping with that. In terms of the neighborhood itself and the challenges that we dealt with on the site related to the conditional use permit, there are a few. The site, the, when Carrie had gone through the, the overall neighborhood photos, we studied about 35 different homes in the neighborhood, and actually, if you drive through the neighborhood, it has a very rolling topography. So some sites sit up very high and then other sites sit lower, and obviously, along with that challenge, we have the creek, and so multiple homes obviously sit on the creek in the neighborhood, and then many of them are in the floodplain. And so we happen to be next to a home in the floodplain, and several of the other adjacent homes are as well. And then the homes across the street are, are not in the floodplain. And so the issue is the subject site that we're working at is in the floodplain, and then as, as a result, we do need to get the lower level of the, the dwelling two feet out of the floodplain. In order to do that, we need to raise the first floor of the house accordingly. This, this neighborhood, as you saw, has a diverse housing stock, and so it's very diverse. I mean, there's one-story Ramblers, there's full two-story homes, and depending on the site and the topography of the site, it ranges a vast amount. In terms of scale and, and what we're doing here, one of the things that comes up is the ridge line of the, the property, and one of the things that happens is that when they measure ridge line, they measure it actually, actually from the, the average height of the site, and the average height of the site actually provides a penalty to the site in terms of where they, they measure it because the site is a walkout site. And so we actually, we'd probably be more like 35 feet if we weren't measured from the average grade, if that makes sense. In terms of the floodplain issue and what we did surrounding that, as part of our work and study of the site, we had met with the neighbors, the laymans to the, I call it the west, but it's kind of northwest, and we had discussed some of their concerns around site drainage and also the transition space between their garage and their home and the Powers' proposed home. And so what we did to resolve those concerns is to, as Carrie mentioned, turn the garage instead of being the gable end to the street, face the garage to the street. And what that allowed is to, to provide more space as a green buffer between the two homes, and then as well promote better drainage through a, a bigger swale so that the runoff of the site is more protective overall. And so through Wayne's work and our work with Carrie and the laymans, we hopefully believe that the resolution before you, you know, meets all of the, the codes with the exception of the floodplain issue, and that's why we're asking for the conditional use permit, but just as importantly fits the conditions of the neighborhood itself.
Good. Questions for Mr. Wissink? You need, you need 3.68 feet above the permissible one-foot...
Correct, yeah.
...height of both the existing areas. Member Swenson?
So the ceiling height in your basement area or your walkout area?
It'd be similar, it'd be similar to what the former proposal was. We're, we had listed nine feet, but it's actually about 8.75 because there's an 18-inch truss, and then you have three-quarter inch plywood, and then you have your wood floor, and then you have drywall, and when you account for those additional things, it ends up being around eight foot nine, eight foot 10, somewhere right in there.
Thank you for turning the garage. That was the one piece of it that I really wanted to dig in and talk about. So thank you for doing that. It, I can see why you would have wanted to do it the other way, but it just fits better and, and I think you'll have happy neighbors. Looking at stormwater runoff, where does the water go? Does it go toward the street? Does it go toward the creek? How, just what is the, what is the flow?
Yep. Unfortunately, the landscape architect who did the plan couldn't be here tonight, and I'm trying to pull my site plan here. Can I set it over here?
Sure. You'll need a handheld microphone, too, Mr. Wissink.
Oh, but I believe you guys have copies before you. There's a couple of things that, as we, as we look at the plan overall, the arrows indicate kind of overall drainage, so the, the hope is to get as much water to the creek off of the backside as possible in the walkout area, and then towards the street, towards Sunny Slope on the front side. As we look at how it interfaces with the property to the northwest, there's kind of two things. There's, there's an area right here, this is a switchback or a swale, so as the, the water comes down, it hits the swale and moves out, and then subsequently over here. And as a result of having, you know, 20 feet at this point, but more importantly, kind of the midpoint here is 30 feet, you're working to get more water mitigated, and then as well, you know, the, the impervious surface off of the driveway moves towards the street itself. So that's the, you know, through working with Wayne, who ultimately will review it and verify that, that things are appropriate, and will take into account making sure that, you know, the swales are implemented appropriately as well, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for the applicant at this point in time? All right, good. Standby, folks. We're going to open this matter up for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and inquire or comment regarding this proposed conditional use permit? Yes, ma'am, welcome.
I'm Becky Briggs. I live at 4509 Browndale Avenue. I'm not an adjacent neighbor, but I'm across the creek from this property. So out of every window, door in the front of my house, I see this property. I guess I am not understanding how high it's going to be from, I, I see the walkout part, and the funny thing about creek properties is you kind of have two fronts of your houses. And when I'm not sure, I'm, I'd like to know what I'm going to be looking at and how much higher this is going to be as I look at it. I mean, it won't be 40 feet from the ground that I look at to the top. How, how high will that be? What kind of a change am I looking at seeing day in, day out?
All right, we'll, we'll address that momentarily.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Briggs. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Roxanne Lehman, and this is my husband, Dan, and we are the, as we call it, the most immediate neighbors. We live at 4801 East Sunny Slope Road, and we are here tonight just to say thank you, really. We had some big concerns about drainage issues when they were going to be so close to the property line and have such a big transition from five feet to our property and some aesthetic aspects, so we just are very thankful to Doug and Abby and Nate Wissink for working with us to find a really happy compromise that I think will now fit into the neighborhood. We always thought they fit. We always thought their house fit. We were just really concerned about the way that they were entering the garage and the, and the auto court, so we feel very grateful tonight. I'd also like to thank the city folks who worked with me to understand this process, so thank you to you. And I'd, I'd like to thank my neighbors who, when they learned yesterday about the details, I didn't share until I thought this was getting very serious and we're close, that they affirmed what Dan and I think are, is so special about our neighborhood and would have been here tonight if they were needed. So I thank my neighbors, even some I think did show up, but they knew that we, that what, what was preserved, I think, tonight was that, what makes our neighborhood so special, the privacy that we, the feel that we have in our backyards and the graceful flow of the land that's between the houses and the spacious sense, the views of the creek, and that soft natural screening, that it's really what makes our neighborhood work. Because as you noted, it's eclectic, eclectic. The styles are eclectic, the size is eclectic, and without that space and green between us, I don't think our neighborhood would be the lovely place that it is. So, thank you. Finally, I'd like to ask to have these entered into the record. The slides that you saw of the neighborhood earlier of the houses, this actually captures what was missing from those slides, which is the space between them, which is what we think really adds a great deal to what makes our place so special to call home.
Thanks. If you hand those to the clerk, that'll be entered into the record right here, the lady in the, wait. Thank you, and thanks, folks. Go ahead, Mrs. Lehman.
I too would like to welcome the Powers and the family to the neighborhood, and thank you for accommodating our needs here.
All right, yeah, well, you, thank you. Other concerns, questions, testimony? Feel free to come forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded to be closed, a public hearing, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carrie. Carrie, we got a question from Mrs. Briggs about the rear elevation at...
Carrie, do you have a, should we put a picture up of it while you're answering that question? It's, what?
I do have a picture on the code.
Okay, but I just wanted him to have a picture of it.
He's, you can ask him anywhere if you're distracted.
I have it if you just want to use it here.
Same here, so.
There it is.
Yep.
Yep, that's it.
You need to look for the lady strolling across the proposed back terrace.
Actually, there are four ladies in this picture if you want to come.
Are there? Is this one of those, is this one of those secret pictures? Find the ladies in the picture. It's the same lady four times.
Mm-hmm. It is.
Copy paste.
Mr. Wissing, you're going to need a handheld.
Just to kind of clarify a couple of details regarding the grading and the visual from, from the creek. There's a couple of things going on as you see in the back of the site plan. And one is because the site is a walkout and because there, we just changed the, a little bit of the elevation in the back, but this is this, this area right here, to the, to the right is a screen porch, I guess, as I'm looking at the, the details. And then on the back here, these are, this is a walkout.
You're not, we're not seeing anything that you're.
Okay, we'll do this. Here, we'll do this. Okay. That's all right, we'll do this. Make it easy.
Excellent.
The city staff did a great job until this point. In terms of the, the walkout area of the, the outdoor patio here, this is a walkout patio and then subsequently there's a retaining wall here. And then there's a lower retaining wall here. And these retaining walls obviously help the walkout grade. And so your visual actually is very green from the back. You don't see all the landscaping, the green, but this area that I'm kind of pointing to is all green area. The way they measure average grade, or the, the way they measure height is from average grade of the site. And the average grade is the existing grade. And that is because the walkout lowers where your first floor is measured from. And I believe on this, Carrie, can we switch to this one? You guys may have one in your packet of this that's a little bit bigger, but it would show where average grade starts from. But average grade would start from significantly below, below where first floor is. So from a measurement perspective, it may appear, based on how the city measures, to the ridge line of forty feet. It may appear forty feet from that measurement, but because it's a walkout site and because of, it's not actually at first floor grade, if that makes sense, and because we have to raise it out of the floodplain, what ends up happening on the backside of the house actually is this measurement from here to this ridge is probably more like thirty-five feet, maybe a little bit less, maybe a hair more. I don't know exactly, but it's around that because of how grade is measured from, from the city code, if that makes sense.
Member Sprague. Yeah, so the, the current elevation is approximately where on that drawing? Or the, I should say, the previous elevation? Is the house still there? Is it already torn down?
No, the house is still there.
Okay, so the current elevation on this drawing would be approximately where? I think that's what she's trying to figure out.
To be honest with you, I, I couldn't tell you exactly. I can, it's a, the current home is a one-story walkout.
Okay. I, I looked at the, the measurements on the drawing. It looked like from the walkout to the top of the ridge was thirty-two, was thirty-two because it says nine thirty-two.
That's right.
It's very difficult to read the, but nine thirty-two and some, some other digits. So, and then, and then the first floor says nine hundred.
That's right.
So it's about thirty-two feet, which is not that high for that, for the, for the neighborhood.
Yeah, Member Bennett. Why don't you go ahead and ask your question while we're pondering this issue.
Well, my, mine would, to set the record straight on the height, question the code provision because there is a sliding scale, but it's not between, it's not up to seventy-five feet, it's from seventy-five feet up. In any event.
Right.
Eight fifty point eleven C height states, "The maximum height to the highest point on a roof of a single or double dwelling shall be thirty-five feet. The maximum, maximum height may be increased by one inch for each foot, but the lot exceeds seventy-five feet in width, in no event shall the maximum height exceed forty feet." So that makes it clear what types of lots we're talking about.
Member Swenson.
I'm going to tell you that I probably couldn't have supported this until you flipped the garage, and it was for a couple of reasons. One, I support getting a basement above a floodplain. I know I talked to Roxanne the other night and, you know, she's lived there for sixteen years and the waters come up to her door before. The biggest concern I had is that all the runoff and everything from that turnaround driveway was going to cause her yard to become more, more saturated and that was going to cause a change in how the water, no matter what you did with that five-foot area for swales and things. So thank you for the three of you for changing that. Because I do support getting houses above the floodplain. I did drive over by Browndale and looked across the creek. You're going to see a two-story house instead of a one-story house. You see a one-story house with a walkout, you're going to see the same walkout and the same, but there's going to be a full another story on top of that house is really what you're going to see. And initially, I think it's going to look a lot bigger because it is a bigger house, but I'm not as uncomfortable about it because there's a change in grade in the back of the house. And I think, as the builder pointed out, it does change what your eye looks like. But I also think that the power family should be cognizant of that, as you put landscaping back there. I also have some concerns about runoff into the creek. Yeah, I want runoff in the creek, but I would prefer that that runoff be as clean as possible. And I know that Member Brindle has often talked about when you live on water, you have to be good stewards of what you put on your grass and what you do with your grass when you cut it. So I encourage you to, to follow that course and do what you can to keep your, your pond clean because it's a beautiful mill pond. It's a very tough neighborhood. You have a very unusual lot. You're kind of almost a little peninsula out there, but the, the fact that you changed it allows me to be able to support it.
Going to move the matter?
I will.
Is there a second? We got a motion and a second. Other comments from council members? All right. Member Bennett.
I also very much appreciate the changes that were made to the plan. I think they address the drainage issue, the space issue really beautifully. I think it's a great design. One thing that you might consider, that the owners might consider for the mill pond issuer is that the watershed district has model plans for buffers that can be created, wonderful landscaping buffers, and they do serve to filter things that go into the pond.
Member Brindle, comment.
Yeah, that's, that's a lead in thank you to what I was going to say. Being new to Edina and new to the area, I think it's important that you know that the watershed district loves questions because they, they very much want the opportunity to educate and make sure that the creek stays as clean as possible. So work with them because you've got, you've probably got more yardage against that creek than almost anybody with how the lot sticks. It's a beautiful lot, so I congratulate you. But with it comes, comes some stewardship and some challenges. So please do a call on the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. They are experts and, and like I said, they do welcome calls to, from residents to learn how to be, how to be the best stewards. They'll help you all they can. Thanks.
Wait, Member Sprague, go ahead.
Just continuing, I, I mean, I'm looking at the, the visual representations of the adjacent houses and I, I look first at those adjacencies and then as you go into the neighborhood, I weight those less. But it, it seems as though there's even quite a bit of variety even on that four or five house strip directly to the northwest of you. Four houses down on forty-eight oh four Sunny Slope, you have more of a contemporary newer construction house as well. So I think it, it, it will fit into the, the character and the integrity of the neighborhood. And, and again, I support the, the change garage to the front, not only for the drainage, but the, the overall aesthetic from the, from the front side.
Well, welcome to Edina. We're pleased to have you here, whether it's on Drexel over at your new home. I can tell the way this is going. You, you picked a beautiful, beautiful spot on the creek and as the layman's both said, it's a, it's a wonderful neighborhood and you can tell from the comments they've made, it's a, that you've got terrific neighbors. I mean, you're not even there yet and you've got people that care about you. So that's a, that's a pretty special thing. And for the Briggses, I think life will be a little bit different. Where you live on the creek is a beautiful spot too, right across the way. And so maybe you can rig up some kind of a communication system across there, second story to second story. Yeah. And, and so I think this will be a, a great project. Nate, thanks for doing such a terrific job here and, and creating a design. Your company long acknowledged, I think, Streeter and Associates as one of the foremost design build companies in the, in the metro. And you folks have made a nice choice and I think, we're looking forward to seeing what it looks like over there on the, on the bend, on the peninsula, on the bend and the creek. So that's, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next matter before us is a public right-of-way vacation request for a portion of West Forty-first Street and Natchez Avenue, request made by Jennifer and Mathias Samuel.
Mayor and members of the council, tonight we have a public hearing for vacating the right-of-way, like the mayor said, on West Forty-fourth Street and a, and a portion of Natchez Avenue. The, the request was, was made from a property owner that's located at forty-one sixty-six Monterey Avenue. This, this photo aerial here shows kind of a, a three-D perspective. It's not really to, to scale for the most, it seems to be stretched out. But the area that's, that's being requested is an unapproved right-of-way on Natchez Avenue, which is the, this lower, lower blue line going up towards the north and then West Forty-fourth Street to, to the east-west. The forty-one sixty-six Monterey is this, this home that's located to the south here. The actual, the original vacation area that was requested, like I say, was Natchez Avenue and West Forty-fourth Street. When we receive these requests, we actually send out notices to the, the private utility companies and look at our, our public utilities. And the responses that we got back from the utility companies was we didn't have any objections to the vacation from Center Point Energy. However, Sentrylink, Comcast, XL Energy and Edina Utilities actually has utilities that are within the northerly area of the vacation request. So what, what are, if, if you do go forward with this vacation, is that we would condition the northerly area to retain the utilities and drainage rights along West Forty-fourth Street and Natchez Avenue to the north. And that area would be shown, and this is in your packet, in area one hundred feet to south of West Forty-fourth Street. And then what's shown in the red hatched area would be retaining the drainage and utility easements for that area. Then the area to the south would be vacating the, the right-of-way in its entirety. From, when, when staff was doing some research on, on this is that we could not find anything in the comprehensive plan that, that indicates a future need for this, this right-of-way. And, but it, but before I get to the, the questions, what I'd like to do is, is have our city attorney talk a little bit about if you go forward with a vacation is, is, is how is the, the property actually divided up to the, to the joining property owners? Roger, if you could cover that quickly.
Very quickly. The city has an easement. It does not own the fee title. That means we have the right to use, use that property for right-of-way purposes and for utilities. When we vacate an easement or right-of-way, we give up our right. That's all. We don't assign our right to anyone. The underlying fee owner, whoever that is, continues to be the fee owner and they claim it. We, we, we do not have the authority to decide interests in real property. Now, having said that, I can tell you a couple of general rules of what happens. Generally, when a right-of-way is vacated, it's divided down the center. Half goes to one side, the property owners, half goes to the other side. That general rule is subject to many exceptions. For example, if a street is platted as part of, I'll make up the apple addition and it's in, the whole street is in the apple addition, when it's created as part of the apple addition. When that boundary line street is vacated, it goes all to the interior of the plat. But again, we can't decide that. It's not within our jurisdiction, our authority to decide who owns what. We just decide whether we want to vacate our easement and then usually there is no dispute, but if there isn't, is a dispute, then that ends up in the court system. People can argue about it.
Question. Member Bennett, I missed, Member Swenson, excuse me.
If it was an easement for a street, can we use the easement for a sidewalk or a pathway?
Yes.
Other questions for Roger? Had you finished your explanation?
Yes.
Now, Member Bennett.
Attorney Knutson, who has standing to request vacation of a right-of-way? It appears that the, that part of the right-of-way being requested to be vacated is adjacent to the requesting property owner's property, but another substantial portion of right-of-way requested to be vacated is not.
Anyone who abuts any part of it has standing to request it, but it changes the vote if you don't have more than fifty percent, thirty-five percent, excuse me, request, in frontage requesting it. It changes from a simple majority to a four-fifths vote.
Follow-up question. Is West Forty-first Street, they're two different streets. They happen to meet at a T intersection, but they're, they're two different rights of way. There is no Forty-first Street until you get to the other side of Susan B. Lincoln School. But is that considered for purposes of this request, a single right-of-way or a single street when you're determining percentages?
Well, you, you'd look at everything that you want to determine and count the length. And, I mean, the, I assume the person who owns Lot Nineteen has signed the request? No? No, okay. Then.
As far as I understand it, there's only one, one, there, there is one set of property owners requesting the vacation, but none of the adjacent.
I saw two names. I didn't know.
None of the adjacent property owners are part of this request.
Then, of course, the city council can vacate right-of-way on its own initiative. But if you don't have an ownership, if you don't own buttering property, then you would not have standing, in my judgment. But the city council can do it anyway. It's not uncommon for the city council, various situations, to vacate right-of-ways if you don't need them.
Do we need permission from the other property owners?
No. It's your right-of-way. You're giving up your easement.
Roger, in your experience, is this, is this, do cities frequently give up a right without a compelling need like this?
They often, I hate to generalize, I've probably sat through several hundred of these hearings. Cities, you look at it differently from city to city. The issue usually is, do we need it for anything? If we don't need it for anything, we'd never want it. And I will comment, because I've been doing this a long time, I have worked on situations where we, cities have vacated right-of-way only to have me condemn it back a few years later because they decided they need it. So that does happen.
Well, the timeframe for the need is what's the most relevant, whether it's now or twenty years from now or, you know, our comp plan goes through twenty-twenty. Two thousand and eight, it was passed and it's twenty-ten through twenty. Is that the time?
Twenty-eighteen.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, I'm sorry. So, if we thought perhaps we might need something past 2018, you'd hate to go and condemn it. That seems very inefficient.
That's a very kind way to put it.
As someone who participated in that comp plan, we were not really looking at pedestrian and bicycle facilities at that point. We didn't do the same kind of review that we did on land use and other issues. So, we didn't inventory, we didn't determine where we would have future need for those facilities. And the plan, the sidewalk plan that's in the two thousand eight comp plan is a repeat of the sidewalk plan from the nineteen ninety-nine comprehensive plan. But we've since, we've since have inventoried some of the gaps, and this, but right-of-way, we haven't inventoried, and that would be something, I think, that would be very helpful for us to know where these spaces exist and what future need we may have for them.
And this is adjacent to the school, so this could be a part of safe routes to school, could be part of a future planning process. I just, I don't understand the compelling need to vacate this now. It seems to be in a semi-strategic location, and to unilaterally vacate it without a compelling need seems to me a little bit rash and premature, yeah.
Well, how is this property being used now?
Lot nineteen, you mean?
I can, if I could pull up the PowerPoint again, I can show you the aerial photo, but it's...
Well, the southern aerial photo, because...
I went by yesterday, and really, that, the street on the southerlymost side of it is, just looks like brush and miscellaneous trees.
That's school property.
It's school property, and then the school actually has a fence and a ball diamond down on this area here, and then it's all vegetated along the southerly right-of-way. And then it's open to the school. There's a fence along Monterey Avenue, and then it's open to the school to the west.
So, if we were to put a sidewalk along it, we still have the, we've always had the easement along where the fence is for the school, correct, on the west side of Monterey?
That's correct, yes.
But we might want to put a path across to the school before looking at a safe routes to school, but that's a private school, not...
No, it's a St. Louis Park public school.
It's a St. Louis Park public school budding, a budding Edina.
Right. Part of the playground is located in Edina. West Forty-first Street is of particular concern or interest because there are no routes to the east to Weber Park, except on the parts of West Forty-first Street where the right-of-way is still preserved. And that was an issue, again, that we weren't thinking of earlier. I know that with the living streets considerations, we're moving toward a recognition that we need to look very intently at these kind of pathways. Otherwise, children from the neighborhood who are accessing either the play equipment at Susan B. Lindgren or the play equipment at Weber Park go up to Forty-first Street or go down to Forty-second Street. When we first moved to the neighborhood in the nineteen eighties, you could still walk all the way across to Weber Park, and there are blocks that remain open. For instance, this is Monterey, and Monterey to Lynn is still open. The right, the city's right-of-way is still in existence.
So, we could put a walking path through this block and through the block to the east of it to get kids safely to Weber Park without having, forcing them to go north to Forty-first or south to Forty-second?
There's also a narrow right-of-way, it appears from the documents that were, the maps that were in the file. Is there still, Director Who, a narrow right-of-way to the north of the temporary inundation area between Lynn and Kipling?
Yes, I believe there is.
And then there's half of right-of-way, the right-of-way from Kipling to mid-block behind Grimes is still open. So, the only piece that's really completely closed off is the right-of-way from midpoint of Kipling to Grimes, to Grimes.
Right.
Oh, I see.
Looks like a potential future path to me, the way it's drawn, not like a vacation of an easement. So, I don't know why we'd have to act on this, on this now. You know, this is something we could take up at another time after a planning process. If we found no compelling need, then we could ourselves move to vacate.
Absolutely.
It is a public hearing, though, so we should probably hear from the public.
But just to clarify, if we did not take this up now, we could take this up at another times ourselves.
Absolutely. I'd just suggest, though, if you're going to close the hearing and make a decision, since they filed a petition, I mean, you could deny the petition or direct preparation of findings and bring it back to your next meeting and deny it at your next meeting. That's, unless you just want to leave it hanging.
Let's take public testimony.
Let's take the public testimony. Any other questions for Director Who? All right. I'm going to open this matter up for a public hearing. I think folks see familiar faces in the audience, you've been here all evening, you know about the three-minute rule, and come on up and give us your name and address, and tell us what your concerns are, your thoughts.
Thank you very much. We're actually the folks who moved for the vacation, the Samuels. I'm Matthias Samuel, and this is my wife, Jennifer. And first of all, thanks for having us and hearing us. It's great to be here. So, we can perhaps answer some of the questions you have. I did feel like I had some answers to some of the things came up, that came up, so I'll try to do that very briefly. We currently live on Alden Drive and have bought the lot at forty-one sixty-six Monterey and are very excited to be moving over there. And we're going to build, actually, Mr. Whissing is, and we're working with elevation as well to build. And the way we came about this is that, we're really focused on the piece at the bottom, on the south. And that is, if you've seen it, some of you may have seen it, it's really kind of overgrown, and it needs to be cleaned up, is the reality. And we want to do that. And that's where we then came to realize that it might make sense to ask for this vacation. In doing this, we've been working closely with the school, the St. Louis Park School, and working very cooperatively, frankly. We filed the request, I guess, ourselves, they didn't participate, but we've been in close consultation with them. Our general idea had been that that fence would be how we would divide it between ourselves, if that's appropriate. There's a fence there on the south side. As we came to study this, we kind of learned about how the strip goes up to the north in the piece on Forty-first Street. Very candidly, we have no interest in the piece on Forty-first Street. We believe that's a builder that owns that lot just to the north of that piece. We have not spoken to him. We have not worked with him, not because we're not open to it, but simply because we wanted to get this to you. The simple thing is this, we want to clean that piece up, but we want to keep the wooded character. I can tell you, the school, St. Louis Park School Superintendent is very open, and please, my wife is telling me.
I also think that St. Louis Park is a little concerned with liability issues because those branches have been falling on their fence, and we have three little children who we would like to be able to play in that area safely. One of the reasons that we bought the lot was because we'd like them to be exposed to just kind of a natural play yard, which we feel, and that's it.
So, our goal is to, in fact, St. Louis Park is, and we've talked with them, they are, they have indicated they're open to replacing that fence, which has been bent down in a few spots by falling trees. We just thought it made more sense, if we owned it, we would take care of it. We very much intend to keep the wooded character, but it does need to be cleaned up. In terms of, you know, Councilmen Sprague raised some issues about future use and sidewalks, very frankly, we would have no problem with a sidewalk going through there, we think it'd be fine. But I will note that it's been the way it has been since the fifties. Nothing has happened there. So, I think, I think that's probably a pretty low issue. We, if we get this vacated, we'll be able to have, we're going to build the same house either way. The house is not going to change. Just let me make this point. But another thing we'll be able to do is have a more gradual, the garage is going to be on the north. It's going to be a tuck-under garage, and if we aren't able to get the vacation, the turn will be very sharp to get in there. That's yet another reason we're hoping to do this. And my wife wanted to say something.
No, I just, that's the red button.
Mayor, does she get a separate three minutes?
Please do, or I'll be in big trouble tonight when we get home.
I think it's two minutes and thirty seconds.
Matthias, sit down, get out of the way, you're worried.
I know. Jennifer, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Jennifer, do you have any further comment? We'll let you. You are entitled to your own time.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm fine. That's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You want to recapture, then, that lost time of yours that she took? All right. Go ahead, thank you.
I think I should sit down.
Can I ask someone else to come up? Can I ask a question on the board? Not for you guys, but now.
For our attorney. So, this fifty feet, if it were vacated, you explained that if it's in an addition that's already been platted, it goes on the side of the addition. If it's not, it's split half and half, correct?
If it's interior to a plat, it would split half and half clearly. If it's all inside of one plat, and is built as part of that plat, then it would all go into the plat, into the interior of the plat.
It's likely it would go in the interior of the plat. This is a different addition.
And so, based on that information, by law...
You pick up six thousand square feet.
It goes south? Carrie?
North.
Or it goes to the field? Does it go to the field, school field, or does it go to forty...
Lot twelve, lot thirteen.
Forty-one eighty-six. I'm just talking about the southerly part.
The part by their house?
Mm-hmm.
The house-to-be? Based on what I've seen here, I can't, can't make that determination. We don't have enough information.
Well, we, okay, so who drew these little lot sizes and the numbers on them?
I did do that. I was, I was just assuming half and half, that's what that scenario represents.
Okay, so we have no idea where this goes, if it's vacated?
I don't think we do.
This portion right here.
Hi, I was thinking, we actually did hire an attorney to, we need to get...
Come up to the mic, you still have time.
Well, it's right. We actually did hire an attorney before we filed the petition to make sure that there wasn't, that, I actually don't even know what she did, but she said that we were fine filing the petition, so it does sound like we had a, it would be platted that way. I don't...
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. We're still taking public testimony unless one of the council members has a staff...
No, I just wanted to clear, and then my second ques, my follow-up question is, if this is an easement, that who has the right to clean it up, not necessarily build on it or use it for building, if it stays an easement for the city, is, or does it stay existing as it looks today, and no one has the right to do anything other than the city on it? Because you told me we didn't own the property, we had the easement on the property, so...
An easement for use over the property.
So, the property owner, whether it's the school or this lot to the south, is the one that has the ability to clear the trees and keep it clean and do whatever they want with it.
They can use it in any manner that's not inconsistent with our use of the property, and there's been a rash of lawsuits on this, unfortunately, which has said, for example, in that easement area, assuming we've built nothing, as we have not here, they could go in and mow the grass and cut trees and do that sort of thing.
Right. They just can't build a swimming pool or do anything like that.
Not without our permission. And then we could even give an encroachment agreement, which we are reluctant to do. There are setback issues and all sorts of issues, but that issue can be dealt with.
Okay, so really legally, at this point, we don't know who owns this, should we vacate it?
And I, what I could do...
Or who controls it? How about I put it that way?
I could look, review it, which I have not, and offer an opinion, but it would just be my opinion, it would not be binding on the property owners or anyone else. We don't, we can't decide that issue.
Okay, thanks.
Member Swenson, a follow-up, so I understand what was just said. You're stating, Roger, that the city could agree bilaterally with the adjacent owner to have the adjacent owner maintain our easement?
They're, if they are the fee owner, if I'm not determined, if they are the fee owner, we could agree to allow them to have a fence there or whatever we wanted to, but they'd have to, they'd have to be consistent with our zoning ordinance, for example.
Right.
And, but you could allow them to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Called an encroachment agreement, and we probably turned out, half of it doesn't really...
So, there isn't, we don't have on file with the city a plat of this lot that shows this easement on the north end of it?
Again, I have not been asked to review it, and I have not, I can't.
No, I guess I'm looking to Carrie pass you on this.
It's got to be easement of record.
Well, no, but before we go on, I just think it's important to know who controls this piece of...
Councilmember Swenson, I can probably answer that, I have had it pulled up here. The lots, forty-one sixty-six, and the school lot where the field is located is the William Scott Edition. And then, as you proceed north of Forty-first Street, that is the Minicotta Vista Third Edition. So, there's, so, what Attorney Knutson is saying is, if I understand right, the lots, the two to the south would probably be split fifty-fifty, based off of what our experience in vacating lots in the city also. And then the lots to the north, it would depend on which, where Forty-first Street was platted, if it was platted with Minicotta or William Scott.
Thank you. I just wanted that piece of information before the public kept testifying, that was all.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening, my name is Garfield Clark, and I represent the St. Louis Park School District, two eighty-three. And in the discussion, I can make a couple of points here to help. Forty-first runs east and west, it is essentially an old woods now. It looks like an old woods and creates a buffer between the playground of the school and then the residential group on the north. And where Natchez is, up on the east side of the school building, there is, it stubs there after about thirty or forty feet, and then there's about a twenty-foot drop to go down to where the field is. And it's essentially then continued on with the easement going south and then swings to the east, and that, and the right-of-way that runs north and south of Natchez is in the middle of the ball field.
Right.
So, St. Louis Park is using it as a part of the ball field, and of course, owns on both sides of it. Then, as you consider, as you continue, its curve swings out to the east, then there is a chain link, six-foot chain link fence, which is built straight on what is a curved road. And so, that fence, in fact, is encroaching in the right-of-way on the east side at about twenty-five to thirty feet. So, it's beyond the fifty percent line if the full width is fifty feet. So, if you were, if it splits fifty-fifty, then twenty-five would go north, twenty-five would go south, and this fence line is actually in the southern half of that right-of-way, if I make that clear.
Okay. Yep.
All right. Fence line runs straight, and the road's bent.
Yes.
And it also then touches on the west side. That is, the fence is encroaching on a small triangular piece on the west side as Natchez curves north.
Okay.
So, and then that piece that's on the south side is, again, an old woods. It's a buffer, again, between the ballpark and then the home that's on the south side, which you've heard from here. The school district has no objection to the vacation so long as, as the north and the south run the typical fifty-fifty split between the two. There is some potential of spending some money at a title company and figure out who is the underlying landowner, but we've opted not to do that because the district itself doesn't have a specific use for it, except as a buffer. So, the district's okay with the vacation, and if you choose to do it, it's obviously okay if you don't vacate it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Clark at this point in time?
Thank you.
Stand by, though, Mr. Clark, if you could. Don't leave yet. Anyone else wish to come up and testify?
Hi, my name is Leigh Anne Viril, and I live on Monterey, so I'm...
What's your, what's your street address?
Forty-one oh nine.
Forty-one oh nine Monterey.
I'm kind of on the curve. So, just, got the letter, just some questions in general. Curious, it sounds like the reason it was initiated is because they wanted to clean up the woods. Is that correct?
Ma'am, just address us, if you would, please.
Okay.
You can ask your questions in the wall.
And then we'll get the answers for you.
Okay, and then also, with the driveway and the access for the garage, sounds like that wouldn't be necessarily cleaning up the woods, that would be creating access to a driveway, it sounds like to me. If it's not vacated, who would be responsible for cleaning that area up, as opposed to letting it stand the way it's been? Can, before the vacation was approved, I would like to see a separation of that forty-first part up at the north and the Natchez part, if that part is approved. Does that make sense? And then it sounded like just that last piece was that, it's not clear who really owns it. There's the vaca, vacation component of it, I mean, the easement component of it, but who owns it underlying? So, it seems like that would need to be clarified before this was approved? And, and how it's divided, if that's just fifty-fifty, have that clarified, too? I think that's it for now.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Ted Johnson. I'm at 4009 Natchez. And my question is more what happens on that north side and what lots are impacted there.
On the Forty-first Street, like?
No, then at Natchez.
No, the north end of Natchez that stubs out.
After the easement bears northward, what happens when it comes into Natchez? Most of my neighbors on Natchez are very unclear as to would this somehow impact us? Would it open up? Would the vacation easement somehow allow somebody to build something more down there? Is there a lot there that we're unaware of? Would it have any impact on the way Natchez at the northern end interfaces with the park area, essentially?
Okay.
Sure.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Oh, sec.
All right, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. All right, let's take that last question first from Mr. Johnson. We'll call it, what happens with the Natchez stub?
Yeah, because there's forty-twenty-one...
If this is approved.
Forty-twenty-one, which is on one map, doesn't have a sewer marking or whatever center point. What are these little square things with round black dots in the middle of it?
Forty-twenty-one is actually owned by the school district, St. Louis Park School District. What would happen on the north, looking at the plat for Minicotta Vista Third, is that they... The half of the right-of-way of Forty-first Street was actually platted with Minicotta Vista Third. And then the other half was platted with the William Scott. We don't have the actual William Scott plat in-house. That's kept at the county, but we do happen to have the Minicotta plat.
Well, the concern was, could something be built at the end of the stub? But what I hear you saying is that forty-nineteen is the last house, and then the lot that's called forty-twenty-one is just empty and it's owned by the school district.
That's correct.
That looks like lots thirteen and fourteen, owned by the school district, and lot fifteen could be forty-nineteen. Okay. So what does the school district use that property for now?
It's just a wooded area.
Okay.
Unused, yeah.
Director Hul, is there also some kind of utility station located at that dead end of where Natchez turns into West Forty-first Street? There is a brick building located.
The city of St. Louis Park actually has a treatment plant that, just on the west side of Natchez, and it's that brick building, forty-seven oh one. For some reason, I can't move this over.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have data on what the actual street name is to the west there.
Well, I have a question.
Member Rendell.
It seems that the purposes of Mr. and Mrs. Samuels would be served by vacating the easement of a portion of this, but not all of it. Why is there such... It seems like a large area identified here as a vacation request.
This... What you see as a vacation request was applied for by the Samuels.
Right. But would it make sense to vacate only part of it?
You could do that, absolutely.
I think the Samuels said they didn't care about what happened up on the north side.
Right. That's what I'm going off of, actually.
Yeah, you could easily...
You couldn't vacate Natchez to Forty-first Street and leave Natchez stubbed in Forty-first Street with easements.
Yep. And we know from what was stated earlier that there's some telecom interest in that northern part of this area.
Yeah, if I could go back to the...
All right. Director Hul, I know you're good at writing these questions down, but Leigh Anne Viril had several questions, too. I think some of them were replicating what we had asked. If not vacated, who's responsible for cleaning up some of this property or maintaining it? Who's the underlying fee owner? Is that going to be an issue that we have to figure out? How is it going to be divided? Those are maybe either questions for you or questions for city attorney.
Do we ask questions? Do we ask questions for the city attorney?
Yeah. And I think we've tried to address some of those. I mean, we're working in a vacuum with some of these things, but...
I mean, as far as the ownership, I have not examined it. I certainly can and give you my opinion. And I agree, you certainly can vacate part of what's been petitioned for and not all of it.
And if not vacated, who's responsible for cleaning up the right-of-way? I guess it's the same thing that's been happening since the 50s.
Can stay as it is.
Or the beginning of time, I don't know.
It just sits there.
I can answer the question. We have the right to occupy it for a right-of-way, for utilities, so on. Until we exercise our right to occupy it, we have no obligation to do anything.
So it can stay as it is or it can be cleaned up by the fee owners?
Right.
Yes.
The adjacent fee owner, yeah. Or actually, the fee owner, because it's an easement across that property.
Looks like two.
Yeah. Which is kind of what we see down by the Dan Patch line. I mean, there's an eas... Railroad goes right through there, but the people take care of the property all the way to the railroad track, you know, just because they want a nice yard. I suspect the Samuels feel the same way, so.
I'm confused again now. I thought that we said you would need an encroachment agreement for them to go in and maintain that right-of-way area.
If they want to build something, let's say they wanted to build a garage or a shed.
Yep.
Since they're the fee owners, they can clear it all the way. And can, rather than vacating, I mean, can it be sold?
Can we sell it?
The easement?
No.
Okay.
We have a right to use it for a specific purpose, but we can't sign it or sell it.
Yep. My brother's driveway right now is on an easement that goes across the railroad from Hanson Road. And he was given permission, a previous owner was given permission to pave the driveway. However, should you ever need the driveway, then they have to vacate it. But he actually keeps a path cleared so that everyone can cut through his neighborhood across the railroad tracks to the other cul-de-sac behind him. So, you know, you can do something different with it, but you got permission from the cit... Previous owner got permission from the city to just have a wider driveway.
And then we do an encroachment agreement.
Right, and the driveway has to go away.
The typical says if we're going to build a street, driveway comes out, or the shed comes out, or whatever is in there.
And it was on his plat.
Just to add to the utility questions on this is that, in your advocate, I did include maps of the CenturyLink and Excel that actually has utilities up in this area here. You can see where the arrow is. And then there's a storm sewer line that cuts across the school property up to Forty-first Street and starts over in this. And that's why we are retaining the utility easements if you were to vacate it 100 feet south of West Forty-fourth Street. What if... Looking at the discussion is that if you wanted to actually even come back and have us redraft the line coming along the northerly part of this area here on Natchez, we could come back at a later meeting and with new legal descriptions and just vacate this southerly area if they so desire.
What's the pleasure that council members on this matter? Someone want to lead off the discussion?
I will. I have a big mouth. I... You know, I'm a little torn. I'm loath to give up an easement without a compelling need on our side. And I know it's not, hasn't been identified on the comp plan, but I also know that we've been talking more about school connectivity, safer routes to school, and things like that. And if there is one iota of possibility it will be used, I would, I think it would be premature to vacate it only to go back and condemn it. And I assume when we condemn it, then we'd have to compensate for the taking as well. So why would we put ourselves out of pocket at this juncture? So for me, it hinges on the probability of use. And if we were unsure, I would err on the side of retaining the right.
Yes, sir.
Member Swenson.
If we retain the right but allow them to build a driveway on their 25 feet that they would get, should we release it because it's part of their fee land? Could we do that? Because part of what they seem interested in, but does that change where they would build the house, Carrie?
Because it's a right-of-way, we treat that like a street setback. So they have, they would have to have a greater setback with the right-of-way in place.
So they have to have a setback from the 25, the center of the 25, 25 feet back would be the start of their right-of-way rule? And then they would have to be, it's about 100, and it's over 75 feet, so they'd have to be 10 feet back unless it's just a garage, and then they have to be 5 feet back?
We would treat it just like a corner lot. They would need a setback from Monterey and the right-of-way where there's no street. We treat it like there is a street there for setback purposes.
So then that's 35 feet?
Correct.
By doing that, we wouldn't have to vacate.
No, but they would have to put their house... If we didn't vacate it and we, and they were forced to build their house based on the current rules of not vacating it, they have to build, start their house 35 feet back from that boundary of the easement.
Well, they stated earlier that it wouldn't bother them if there was a sidewalk along there between Monterey and toward the school. They already stated that. And I have no idea, so I'm asking the question, what would it take to simply move the easement, move it north, to give them the distance they need?
You'd have to condemn St. Louis Park's property to get that right, correct?
We can move it 25...
What you have now, and you've got rid of some of it, yes.
Yeah.
You could move it 25 feet north and leave a 25-foot easement.
You could leave it 20... You could vacate 25 and leave 25, yes.
Yep, and just move it north.
Nothing is moved. Well, yes, yes.
If that would give them the room to allow them to build what they need to build, with the driveway they need to have, and we would still retain an easement in the area, should we in the future need to use it?
I could probably support. 25 feet would be enough to do any type of path we could come up with, even regionals like 10, so.
Right.
That's a novel idea.
I mean, it's, there is space there to do it. It's not like we're constructed in an area where we wouldn't be able to do that. There is space to do it, so it makes... And there isn't a utility line that would make it, that would prevent that. So I don't see a reason not to do it.
Well, it allows them to build something in a different spot and allows them to build something bigger. So it is an advantage to the property owner, even though it's theirs by fee, it's ours by easement. So there is a change in what they can do with the property and the size of what they can do with the property, because it changes the percentage that they can build on it.
Lot coverage?
Lot coverage.
Member Rendell.
How does a prospective seller and/or prospective buyer know, learn about an easement or a right-of-way? Either Attorney Knutson or...
It's of record, is it not?
It's on the plat.
You check title.
So it's something that's routinely known to the seller and to the buyer?
Title commitment would have it on any closing of a property. They'd have a plat map, and they would have any easement of record on the plat. That's part of the title work.
Yep.
And so any impact on valuation would be known at the time the transaction was completed?
Correct.
Years ago, we did one of these over off Blake Road, and it just involved about six feet of property going into the backyards of some folks all the way down the line, kind of right where that old barn is on Blake Road where Jerry Ronhorse lived.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So right down that tree strip, west to east towards Mirror Lake, the city approved a vacation, and everybody added like six feet. Well, that's a lot different than approving a vacation of an easement that increases the size of their property by about 25%. And so you've added instantaneous value to this property that we would recapture in a way from increased valuation and property tax accordingly. But it's a pretty extraordinary vacation in the sense of how you've enhanced the value of that property by giving up the easement. And I don't know, I don't know how to deal with that issue. I just raised the issue that all of a sudden a 25,000, 24,000 square foot lot turns into a 30,000 square foot lot.
Well, and I smiled with recognition because in my first year on council, when we were discussing trails and facilities, I was actually on a field trip out by Blake Road trying to find some connection into the Highlands neighborhood so that people didn't have to, schoolchildren didn't have to go to Vernon or Interlochen to try to come around on Mirror Lake's Drive. And it's so frustrating that we, there's been so much wisdom in the community, but there wasn't wisdom. There was short-sightedness on this aspect of people wanting to travel by something other than car and preserving the facilities to do that. So this was, that was my first thought when I saw this, was that we've just had these discussions with Living Streets about not conveying, not vacating rights of way because of this need to develop more of these facilities.
I... That just triggered another thought. I mean, we're holding these rights as stewards in the benefit of the public interest in the long term. Again, gets back to, is there a compelling need now? Is adding to someone's property value so they can build a compelling need for the greater good to vacate this right? Do you have a thought?
My thought is that part of our analysis as staff has been to look at, what do we currently use this public property or this public easement for? Do we make any public use of it right now? Do we have any plans that have been authorized or approved by the city council in any way, or any even contemplated that would make a public use of this public easement? Because if we don't, the only reason we were granted this public easement in the first place is to do some kind of public function with it. And if as staff, we're not making any public use of it and we don't foresee any public use of it, we just want to, we want you to know that. It's a reasonable, it's a reasonable view for you to look at, look at this and say, but it could be something else in the future. That, but in terms of what we know it's being used for now and what we project using our current plans, we don't see any public use for it, and we just need you to know that. In terms of how is the property then, how, what happens to it from a valuation standpoint, all of this, when it is triggered at the county level, is part of evaluation that would occur, and our city assessor would take note of it and make any necessary adjustment in the value of the property. So that does, that does trigger that kind of, that kind of review.
I would, I will move to deny this. And I think, I'm just feeling that it's premature. And pending some other conversations with Living Streets, Safe Routes to School, and other evaluations, if we deem in the future that we no longer need it and there's no possible future contemplated use, then I'd feel much more comfortable going forward with this. But for now, I have to move to deny it.
And then to create a set of...
Create findings to support the same.
Bring them back to the council.
Would be part of the motion.
Your second?
I'm going to second it for discussion.
Okay.
Because I want to hear everybody else's thoughts, too, and how you're feeling about it.
Well, my thoughts are that looking at the property that abuts the... Well, my thoughts are that looking at the property that abuts the southern part of the request, where Natchez makes its turn to go east-west.
Yep.
There is one property south of that, and it is the requestor's property. It's the Samuel's property. So, if we deny this tonight, the reason that I could live with that is that we have more work to do on what part of this, and it may be that the Samuels have some work to do, on what part of this ought to be vacated, which would then allow them to do what they need to do, and then does not vacate any of the rest of it. The other option is to simply move the easement north, so we don't end up losing an easement in that area. We simply move it north by however far it is, a reasonable amount, that then gives them the area that they need, and we preserve an easement across the southern end of that area.
Roger, denial tonight with findings would not preclude them from coming back with a different application in the future, correct?
That is correct. But I just, one clarification, moving the easement north, what you're really saying is you're going to vacate, you would vacate part of it to the south, but the northern, the current northerly line of the easement isn't going to go further north.
Yeah. You would be suggesting, Mary, what I think is taking the southerly line of the easement and moving the southerly line of the easement north, not changing the northern line of the easement.
Okay. I mean, I'm suggesting anything, but...
No, I think I was listening to you, and I think that's...
And you're saying not an arbitrary distance, but just enough to accomplish their need?
Right.
Should that be their wish in the future?
Right. So, what you're saying is that the easement would simply be narrower on that southern end? Oh, I can live with that, that's fine.
But that's not the application before us?
No, that's right.
And again, I think the city attorney mentioned this earlier, that because of the number of people who signed the petition, it would require four-fifths of you to approve an affirmative action tonight.
Takes four-fifths, four to...
An affirmative action?
To begin the vacation, or to approve the vacation.
Well, how about to deny?
To deny, it's just a simple majority, isn't it?
If it isn't approved, it's denied, but yes.
Well...
Yeah, right.
All right, all right.
Not always.
To pass a motion takes three votes.
Not to approve. Member Bennett?
I agree with my colleague Josh Sprague. I had, again, I, in 2007, '08, have been on these field trips to try to find ways to create connections where either land was not retained or was given up. And we are learning now how shortsighted that was.
Well, the one that he's talking about, though, actually ran into Interlochen, country building, going all the way through the Highlands. So, I just want you to feel better about that.
Well, we actually looked for a route north of the country, too. I mean, it was an expensive field trip, looking for space where you could create a public right-of-way for pedestrians and bicyclists, not talking about new roadway. The other set of concerns or reaction and phone calls that I've received has been pertaining to Member Brendel's first suggestion, which is a comfort level with something that would request something that's specifically tied to a specific need. This was a very big request to begin with, and if there is a specific need, I think it would be best to have that identified in a new application, and then that can be considered as it is. And there can be preservation by the city of the facilities that it will be determining a need for as we develop safe routes to school and parks and other plans.
I'm done. Go ahead.
The existing property at 4166 Monterey is almost 25,000 square feet. I think they can build any kind of house they want on that property. We've heard from our city attorney that if they want to clean up the backyard, even in the right-of-way, they can go ahead and do it as a fee owner. I would entertain a more modest request for a vacation of the easement in order to protect the same sorts of possibilities that my colleagues have talked about, but I'm not interested in approving this tonight.
Can I call the question?
Yeah. All right. All those in favor of denying the public right-of-way vacation request for the portion of West 41st Street and Natchez Avenue embodied in Resolution 2012-86, say aye.
And cooperation of findings?
What?
That was part of my...
Including appropriate findings to be adopted by the council. All those in favor of denying the vacation request as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the motion, say nay. Abstentions?
No, I voted.
Okay. Vacation request tonight. Next we have...
It's not that we don't want you to do this, I just want to be clear, just from me. It's not that we don't want you to do this, it's that we need to find a way to finesse this so that you can do it.
Did a nice job representing yourselves. You did, both of you. All right. Next we have before us, on a public hearing basis, an appeal of Coachina Del Barrio of the imposition of an administrative penalty for a second violation of the City Ordinance 900.15 subdivision 3. It is a potential $1,000 fine and more significantly, a three-day liquor license suspension for a second violation of serving a minor within 24 months. Chief Long, you have this matter.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My hope is you've all had an opportunity to read the packet that was submitted on the Barrio violation that occurred on May 15th. Before continuing, I should point out that this establishment currently has a probationary liquor license. That probationary liquor license was issued after the restaurant failed to meet the 60% food, 40% liquor ratio. As part of that violation, they were fined $500. Moving forward to this violation, twice a year, the city conducts compliance checks to ensure liquor establishments are not selling to underage people. We send out a letter well in advance telling the establishments that we will be sending in decoys who will use their true underage identification and will attempt to order liquor. For this particular incident, we mailed that letter on April 16, 2012. On May 15, 2012, we visited Barrio. An 18-year-old male decoy entered with two plainclothes officers. The bartender asked the three people for their identifications as they sat at the bar, and all three presented their real driver's license. The 18-year-old's license has in capital letters above the picture the words that say "under 21." The bartender handed the IDs back to the three individuals, and they ordered beer. The bartender served the 18-year-old a Coors Light beer. The server was advised he had served an underage person, and indicated, he indicated that he thought the driver's license had said 1983. However, keep in mind that above the picture, it says "under 21." In the packet we mailed to the liquor establishments, we include four pages of sample driver's licenses and how to read them. This is a second violation within six months for this restaurant, the first being the 60/40 violation. City ordinance suggests that if serving an underage person is a second violation within 24 months, the consequences are a $1,000 fine and a three-day suspension of the liquor license. The restaurant has already paid the $1,000 fine, and I met with the restaurant towards the end of last week. I met with the owner, the general manager, and the operations manager. They appear to have things in place to prevent this from happening again. It was a good meeting. They admit that they violated the law, and however, we still recommend, being that it's a second violation in six months, that you uphold the three-day suspension.
Thank you. Questions for the chief on this matter? Yes, Members Sprague.
Chief, when's the last time we carried out this penalty?
It would have been Chuck E. Cheese's, and it was about four years ago. No, I'm going to be corrected.
Or Clerk Mangan, either of you.
It was Pinstripes in December.
Thank you.
Okay, and so, and the fine stood as proposed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and in terms of the three...
Yes.
It had to be second to get to this level of this category. And so, tell me about the three days. That was business days, is that simply consecutive calendar days? And how did we administer that with Pinstripes? What was the outcome?
We provide the enforcement. City Clerk Mangan actually addresses the days off.
We worked with Pinstripes. It is three consecutive calendar days, and we let them scrutinize the December calendar, and they chose to be closed the 24th, 25th, and 26th of December, close to the sale of alcohol.
How and what timeframe do they have to choose the three days? How many, you know, within how many days of the violation?
Typically, they, he came and worked, he came in and worked with us within about two or three days of getting his notice of penalty.
What I meant...
But it's not, there's nothing in code that says. They have to either file, they have to either pay and file their administrative appeal within 10 days, pay within 21 days, but the code is silent on when they have to work with us to select the days to serve their suspension.
And with the days being selected, do those have to be completed within the calendar year of the violation?
It's, the code is silent on that.
Okay. But in Pinstripes, in Pinstripes' example, they did it within that same calendar year of the violation?
Right, within 21 days of the violation, they served their...
Oh, they did it quickly. And Chuck E. Cheese was...
The same.
Okay. Thank you.
Clerk Mangan, the reason that it wasn't that they failed another 21 tests that they are on probation, it's because their sales of liquor to food were not. So, do we have that in our code, that that's considered the first one, and that therefore they are on probation? Is that how that works?
I clarified that with the city attorney earlier, but it says, yes, under, I have to open up the packet, but the, yeah, the ordinance says any violation under computation of violations, so it doesn't matter which violation. If it's a second violation on the matrix, no matter what the first violation is, it falls under the second violation.
So, any also includes not making your 60/40? That was my element part of it. Okay.
Mayor, members of the council? I'd like to also point out in that same provision, subdivision 8, it says, regardless of the first and second, you have the discretion, when it's in front of you, to decide, to deviate from the presumptive penalty if you choose to. So, even if it were in a second violation, or it's a different type of violation, you can still suspend them up to 60 days, excuse me, up to 60 days, or revoke their license, or impose a civil fine not to exceed $2,000. You have that discretion.
Roger, what findings are required to make that deviation?
You would find that there's something different here, anything you find that would justify it. For example, that it was more severe or less severe, or is, any good cause?
Well, then you're saying the reverse then, too, that we could find that because the first one wasn't that they served someone under 21, they just didn't fit our matrix for 60/40, that the second violation could constitute the penalty but not the suspension?
Yes, you could do that as well. You can go more or less.
That's kind of where my question had gone. I'm sorry.
It says extenuating or aggravating reasons to deviate. So, extenuating would probably be mitigating, or aggravating would be the opposite. As I read it.
Other questions for the chief at this point in time? All right, thanks, chief. Stand by. And Mr. Burnett back there, handling his own appeal, it appears. You're going to handle your own appeal?
I am.
All right.
It's not, council, Minister Mayor, it's not really an appeal, it's more, I just wanted you to see the whites in my eyes.
All right, give us your name and address, please.
Ryan Burnett, Coachina Del Barrio, 5036 France Avenue South, 55410. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to be before the council to discuss the failure that happened on Tuesday, May 15th. First of all, I want to apologize to you and the committee, community, on behalf of our entire team. We take full responsibility for what happened and are absolutely determined to keep it from happening again. We truly understand the seriousness of this offense. I'm here hat in hand. I'm embarrassed, I'm angry, a lot of other adjectives that are probably not appropriate right now. And I wanted you to see that I am taking this seriously, that we have taken steps, of which to make sure that this does not happen again. The server that failed the compliance test was terminated the following day, and Police Chief Long has our training manual as well as our protocol for alcohol compliance. As you know, the last time I was here, or this, Coachina Del Barrio was discussed, it was regarding to the 60/40 rule. And in pertaining that, we are now at 58.1% food to alcohol, as opposed to the 51. So, for 2012, we're at 58.1%. So, we're fairly proud about that. And in consideration of your time, I want to try and keep this brief, but I'm asking for leniency in regards to the penalty. I've already paid the fine, and I, we're complicit, we're contrite. If the three days is mandatory, which sounds like it may not be, I'd ask for someone to help me, help work with me and figure out what days that would best, one, help Barrio maintain the business that we've built in two years, as well as would be a date there's going to be less clients coming through where we have to tell them that we're not going to be able to serve alcohol. So, I appreciate your time, and obviously am ready for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Any questions for Mr. Burnett?
Nope.
All right, thank you. And on that penalty matrix, did you say one of the options was an enhanced fine up to $2,000?
That's correct. This parrots what state law provides, yes, $2,000.
All right.
Public hearing?
This is a public hearing. I'm going to open the matter up now for public testimony. Is there anyone that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Move to second, we close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carrie? All right, let's have a little discussion about this. It's a pretty interesting situation, I think. We don't have, I've been involved in situations where we've seen two minors served within this period.
Right.
That, to me, is a more serious thing in a way. But Member Swenson, I think you were, I could tell you were thinking about some things here that'll be valuable to us, so go ahead.
Well, I'm going to say that I think they have to feel some of the pain of this, because I agree with Chief Long that this is a really important thing. And the fine certainly is painful, and I would propose a one-day suspension.
I need you to work with the clerk to determine...
And the reason I say that is, if it were, we've upheld the three-day suspension every time, it's two in a row or whatever, but this, because we had a compliance situation because of the 60/40, to me, that's different. And I know it still falls in our matrix, but it feels different to me.
Okay.
I may be the only one that feels that way, though.
I think so. Member Brendel?
No, I think I can live with that. I do want to recognize Ryan and the restaurant staff for the efforts that have been made to increase their food sales rather quickly, and I wasn't sure it could be done within the year, but maybe it can, and that would be marvelous. And that's enormous, it's huge. So, I'd love to see the suspension waived, but I can compromise to one day. So, I'd love to see the suspension waived, but I can compromise to one day if my colleagues are ready to do that.
Member Sprague.
I, Barrio is a solid operator, they're running a great restaurant and business. I'm concerned, though, about waiving the requirements without some type of finding on extenuating circumstances. If you're going to appeal a penalty, I need to know what the extenuating circumstances are, so that I can evenly apply this ordinance in the future, for future applicants that come up and say, hey, you waived this with this restaurant, and we have similar circumstances. So, I'm kind of lacking the findings to find leniency, even though I believe this is a solid business, and they're acting in good faith, yet the ordinance requires me to find extenuating circumstances in order to waive the penalty. So, what are those from the dais here, in your opinion?
I'll ask Roger a question, but it strikes me that extenuating circumstances are a little bit like variances, that they're fairly subjective, and one isn't a precedent for another situation. If we consider the fact that the extenuating circumstances here may be that it wasn't that he served two minors within a 20 or four-month period, but he had failed to meet the 60-40 ratio, and has made great strides in bringing himself into compliance with the 60-40 ratio within just a short period of time, you know, about a half a year, those to me would be sufficient extenuating circumstances under this particular fact pattern to say, okay, here the fine is the same as it would have been for a second violation, first violation, I guess it is, and then the one-day suspension. That I would think would be sufficient, in my mind, at least for extenuating circumstances in this particular situation.
Manager Neal.
From the staff standpoint, we've had some discussion about this, and I can't offer you any extenuating circumstances, or mitigating circumstances on behalf of the violations themselves, you know. From a staff standpoint, it's not, it's really not our position to offer mercy to anybody. It's our position to, that's your prerogative, as elected officials, but from the standpoint of the violations themselves, in both instances, they're very clear, and no extenuating or mitigating circumstances in the violations themselves. As you apply the ordinance and the law in this case, if you find some extenuating or mitigating circumstances, you may find some in the application of the punishments themselves, but in the two violations, we don't find any.
I'd just comment again that these are, if, there would be little need for us to sit as an appeal board, or in a quasi-judicial capacity, if the administrative matrix was going to just be enforced on a rote sort of basis, then what's the purpose of having an appeal mechanism for someone to come and present circumstances that might cause us to think they were extenuating enough to modify the presumed penalties for violations in the matrix? And I think Member Swenson has articulated reasons why there are extenuating circumstances here, and I'm comfortable with those as well, the $1,000 fine and a one-day suspension.
Member Bennett.
I'm not comfortable. I think you have a fine business, and I appreciate the fact that you came to speak this evening and spoke so well, but I look at this packet, and there was a really clear letter sent out from the police department, warning that this check was coming up, and I, pages of examples of what these licenses will look like, and it appeared to me to be an invitation to, if training needed to be refreshed with employees, or there were employees who hadn't had as much training as other employees, a chance to review. And somehow, something, someone either didn't take the training seriously, or didn't get the training they were supposed to, but sold to someone who was clearly identified by their ID as someone underage. And I think one of the things that distinguishes our community is that we have a vibrant community with really vibrant businesses, and places that people want to be at all times of day, and in the evening, the Southdale area, Centennial Lakes area, 50th and France, but we're also, we are a very safe place for people to be out. And I think that the code that we have, the ordinances that we have, are designed to protect that safety. And I have to uphold the matrix that we've agreed to, and the penalty that's recommended.
Member Rendell? Any more, any additional comments?
No.
Okay.
Member Sprague, I know that you're kind of wrestling with this, I don't know if you've...
My, I understand this is a case-by-case basis, but I want a firm finding of extenuating circumstances before I deviate from the table. And the reason why is in the future, even though this is not a precedent, it will be perceived as such. We ought to have a rational basis for our findings. It's not because I don't respect the good faith of the applicant. I know the operator well, but I also have a duty to make sure our ordinances are followed, and that the penalties are handed out even-handedly across factual situations. So, if there were a strong enough finding of extenuating circumstances, and maybe we want to have a little more discussion, Mayor, about whether a second violation not within the same category is an extenuating circumstances. To me, if that is what is intended, then the table and this ordinance should be revised, because that's not what comes across in the ordinance itself. Can we talk about that a little bit more?
Certainly.
Okay.
Sure. I think when we added the fine for not complying with 60-40 for the first time, I didn't understand as we passed it, that that would be considered number one in the table, that I thought that that was in itself, and I probably missed it, you probably had a matrix in the handout, and I just missed that. But for me, it didn't, I didn't view that as the first violation. I viewed it as a way that we were dealing with our 60-40 issue. So, when this came up, and it was a second violation, I'll be honest, I was surprised. You know, if they had after-hours sale and this, I would view it as a second violation, because those are two very specific things. So, for me, personally, the deviation is because, and maybe it's on the chart, but that I didn't feel that a 60-40 put them as a first offense for everything else that we have on it. I'll be honest. So, I view this as a first offense, and I view that for, as a first offense, a $1,000 fine and a one-day suspension is more than we would have normally done.
Any further thoughts? Member Bennett, go ahead.
Member Swenson, what if the first violation were underage sale, and the second violation was violation of the 60-40 rule? What would your thought be?
I would feel the same way. The 60-40 rule, to me, isn't in this matrix.
Is outside the matrix, but we discussed it and voted on it as a matrix.
I understand that. I totally understand what you're saying, I'm just telling you that.
So, am I also hearing interest in revisiting this matrix? I mean, because if you make the finding based on the fact that it's a second violation in a different category, you're kind of changing the policy.
Yeah.
So, maybe the policy needs to be changed to fit what our intent is, if this ordinance isn't meeting the intent.
I was really clear on what we were doing when we adopted the matrix, so my intent was to make the vote that we made. I think, again, yeah.
Can I ask Clerk Mangan some more about the history of the application of this matrix?
Certainly can.
Okay, so, in the Pinstripes case, that was two within the same category?
Correct, it was two sales to minor.
And Chuck E. Cheese, two within the same?
Correct.
And anything, any other second violators before that, that you can recall, that you could describe?
Two guys from Italy, I think.
In the previous, in previous years, we had a penalty matrix that had a requirement that there be a liquor manager on duty. Do you recall that?
I do.
That did trigger second violations in the past. I don't have the data in front of me, but I can tell you, it could have been, Eden Avenue Grill, I just can't remember. It could have been, I think it might have been two guys from Italy, because what it used to be is that there had to be somebody that had a licensed manager, a manager's license, on duty every moment that the restaurant was open. So, if we came in and did a check, and there wasn't, that was, and it was a fairly minor penalty for that. It might have been a $100 fine, but that would trigger the next iteration for the subsequent compliance check.
And so, those second violators were also within the same category? Or you're saying that liquor manager was a different category?
No, if somebody didn't have a liquor manager, and then they failed their compliance check, they would have gotten the suspension, the second violation penalty.
And were the violations mitigated, to your knowledge?
They were not.
If I can ask us a question, or it appears to me that the purpose of the matrix, and it seems to have existed longer than I've been working with it or aware of it, is that first violation puts you on notice, puts the business owner on notice, that all is not well, that there are rules that are not being complied with. And it seems when you're looking at the matrix and the penalties that are currently in it, there is a steep climb, but I think that that, you know, there has been a warning given, and then when that second violation follows within that time period, something, you had something wrong, something that hasn't been corrected. You haven't trained, or educated, or put controls in place, because you've had a second violation occur, whether it's of the same type or not. And so, I think it's appropriate to have a steep curve going to second violation and beyond, because you had that warning, and you didn't, and the business did not use that warning to make the changes that were needed to make, so that a second violation would not occur.
So, you're, we're talking about the deterrence value of the matrix.
I think it's been intentional, and I support it.
Again, would argue that it is a presumptive matrix, it's presumptive penalty chart. It doesn't mean that we have to follow it. And to Member Sprague's question on what would be the extenuating reasons to deviate from it, I would direct us all to subdivision one, which in the middle of it says, the council may deviate from the presumptive penalty when it finds that there is, there exists extenuating or aggravating reasons to deviate, including but not limited to a licensee's efforts in combination with the state or the city to prevent the sale of alcohol, I think it means two minors. So, we just heard from the chief that he's gone through a process over at Barrio that he feels comfortable with, that they're going to be in compliance. We heard Mr. Burnett talk about the efforts they've made to make sure that there's compliance in the future. I think, right here, embodied in the penalty matrix, is language that creates those sort of extenuating reasons as to why we might deviate from the penalty matrix with something that is still punitive. A $1,000 fine, certainly losing liquor revenue for a day is not non-punitive, and still allow us to look at other folks that may be in front of us for different reasons, and say, well, let's hear your story. Let's hear what your extenuating reasons are. But in this particular circumstance, we've heard extenuating reasons, I think, from both the chief and the operator. When I look at all these, just one other thought, when I look at all of these types of violations that are listed here, it does seem to be, I'm looking at commission of a felony related to licensed activities, sale of alcohol beverage while license is under suspension, adult entertainment, sale of intoxicated liquor on his license for 32% malt liquor, refusal to allow city inspectors or police on the premises, after-hours sale of liquor, after-hours consumption of alcoholic beverages, illegal gambling, I mean, all of those relate to each other. The food, this is probably something we should look at yet this year, this full food liquor ratio, and whether or not it belongs appropriately in the penalty matrix. I'm not sure now that it does, as I look at all of these violations that seem to hang together pretty well, except for the food liquor ratio. And that's something, frankly, I think we need to be concerned about, as people change their dining and drinking habits over time. And whether or not, as a consequence of those changed habits, we want to continue to think about having that food liquor ratio in the penalty matrix, or have some sort of a separate mechanism for dealing with violations of that, that could include some of the same things that we're talking about here.
That, I agree with 100%, because these other violations are willful, destructive, dangerous. The 60% is a, would be the result of a business strategy that over time is not being successful, whether they did not have enough brunches, or something like that. It seems to be out of place, but yet it's in here. And, of course, I moved that we revisit the percentage anyway, so I'm not a fan of where it sits now, but in subsection seven, I wonder if this applies as well, subsequent appearances upon a second appearance before the council, the council shall impose a presumptive penalty for the violation, giving rise to the particular violations that were subject of the prior appearance. Oh, that's two in the same, in the same category? Is that what that's, okay.
Right, I think, that would be a subsection that would reinforce what we did with respect to Pinstripes.
Got it.
Chuck E. Cheese.
Okay, so that doesn't apply here.
I'll give you a motion, that the fine be set at $1,000, that it get a one-day suspension, but that it be considered a second offense in our makeup, in a second violation in our matrix, so that if they fail it again, it becomes a third violation.
Sir, a second?
Second.
No, discussion, Member Bennett, I think you wanted to comment on something.
Well, I think it would be important for the record to, if testimony or statements have been made, that were then interpreted as being extenuating, or extenuating circumstances, I think it would be important for the record to indicate that the speaker, I don't think the chief said that there was anything that to him was an extenuating circumstance. I think that was...
You're not saying that.
No, I'm not saying you did, but I'm saying that the record, that I want the record to be clear, that I think that was interpretation. I don't agree with that interpretation, and I, again, look to the legislative history and the fact that in the past, we had a first violation of a house manager that was changed this, but there was no discussion of change in philosophy that I've been a part of. I understand, Member Sprague, and Mayor, that you want to hold a discussion at a future time. That's not the discussion we're having this evening, and so I can't support the motion. I understand it's been thoughtfully made, but I think that we have this matrix for a reason, and I want to uphold it.
Other comments? Would your motion, Member Swenson, include appropriate findings being drafted that deal with the extenuating reasons?
Yes. Could I ask that our city attorney?
Yes.
Help us with that?
Draft those reasons, yep. Is that okay with the seconder?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Carrie.
So, you understand that this is considered a second violation in the matrix, a third violation for any of them, and I can give you a copy of this, is a $2,000 fine and a seven-day suspension. Now, that will help your liquor-to-food ratio, but I don't think that's the way you want to do it. Okay.
Next matter before us is resolution 2012-87, accepting various donations. We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Our motion is second to adopt the resolution, accepting donations. Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carrie.
We've got some interesting donations this reporting period, including a $1,500 donation from AAA to the Adana Police Department to aid in their distracted driving program. So, those donors' names will be posted on the website. Next matter before us is the...
Mayor, can I interrupt? We have to go back to community... We have to go back to community comment for a moment.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Community comment, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come before the council and express a concern or raise an issue with us that isn't otherwise on the agenda this evening? You'd have three minutes, so do that. You're welcome to come forward. Seeing no one coming forward, thanks, Member Sprague. Don't know why I walked right by that. Next is a proposed amendment, number one, to the Southdale redevelopment agreement. And Manager Neil, you have this matter.
I do, ably assisted by our attorney, Mr. Lindgren. Following the council's approval of the original Southdale redevelopment agreement on April 17th, we began to hold some, some conversations at the request of Simon Property Group about getting, getting the document in final form, and they began to express some concerns about a provision in the agreement that was approved by the council. And that provision had to do with their, their ability to, that their ability to appeal their evaluation was barred in the agreement. We'd had discussions with, with Simon Property Group about that particular provision in the agreement. However, after the agreement was, was approved by the council, there, there was a change of heart. We had discussions with them about what to do about that. Should we, was there the ability of the, of the parties, just kind of bilaterally, to, to make a change to the agreement, to reflect something that we might negotiate and agree on? And I think our determination was that there was not, that this was a material change to the agreement, and therefore it needed to come back to the city council for a, a consideration. So that's why we're here tonight. The proposed language comes from section 4.6, and I've included both the approved, the language from the approved document and also from the proposed section of 4.6. And essentially, what's being proposed is this, that, that in exchange for the city taking back or, or removing the bar for valuation challenges in the future from the agreement, Simon agrees to a higher baseline evaluation in January, January 2 of 2012 of $115 million and $120 million on January 1 of 2013. That is essentially what is being proposed in this amendment. Be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, and Mr. Lindgren can answer questions as well. And we do have representatives from Simon Property Group in the audience tonight that can answer questions from, from that standpoint. I can tell you that, that there's been considerable discussion and negotiation on this proposed language already. And the proposed language that we're, that we are providing to you is language that we think is consistent with their request, and it's language that, that they also have agreed that they can support as well, they being Simon Property Group in this case.
Is this, go ahead, Members Swenson.
One, the 31st of this, 30th, September, April, June. The 30th of this month is the last day, and this is our last council meeting. So the law did not change. If this is not approved, then there is no loan.
If, if this proposed language is not approved, the, the language, and I'll ask maybe Mr. Lindgren to have the answer in this question, but we, the council has acted on something called the Southdale redevelopment agreement. You have approved it. We have provided it to Simon. That would be the agreement, and if they chose not to sign it, that would be their prerogative, I suppose. Is that, Mr. Lindgren?
I think, yes, the deadline is June 30 to do that, and they have, not to speak for them, but they have indicated that that language, as previously approved, as stated in your business item, as approved by the council, is, is no longer acceptable to them.
And when I voted on it last time, I said that the, one of my conditions for approval was that we get the transportation, the, the bus part of it solved. So do you have an update on that for me?
We could also ask the Simon representatives, but we have heard from Metro Transit that they are in the final stages of, of the negotiations. I got an update on that from, from them just this week. And other than that, I might ask, might ask Lori Van Dalen if she has any more current update than that.
Thank you. We did receive the draft...
Do identify yourself, please.
Sure. Lori Van Dalen, 10 Southdale Center, Adana, Minnesota. We did receive the draft document back from Metropolitan Council just on Wednesday. It was two weeks later than what they had promised us, so we had agreed in conversation to the changes after the April city council meeting. So we are expecting that this will move quite quickly on our side, so it's in our attorney's hands, and we promised to get it back to the council next week.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have another question. So tonight, were there other stipulations? We could pass those, and then they'd have to agree to them by the 30th. We don't have to accept this exact language, because they still have to execute the agreement anyway. So if there were another provision included, then the onus would be on Simon to execute, correct? Mr. Lindgren or Manager Neil?
Yeah, I, that's certainly the position that you're in. You know, we, I can tell you, as we've, we, I believe that we've negotiated this proposal in good faith, and we are, we essentially are kind of at a point here where we've run out of time, because of a state imposed deadline, but also because it took a while to get to this position where there was language that they could agree to.
Tonight is the 19th of June. We passed this on April 17th. That's two months ago that we passed it. So the, the time crunch to me is not something that we imposed, but has been imposed on us.
Well, it's imposed on us statutorily too, no. I mean, we just have to face the reality of it. So I, I tell you that from, from my point of view, I was the one, I think, that lobbied hard that we'd be able to make sure we were in tax court with them every year. And so in the context of giving them an interest-free loan, I think our collective notion was we didn't want to see them in tax court. I didn't expect that we would be able to just, on our own volition, raise their assessed value and not have them oppose it. I recall that we had some sort of a cap on what we could do, but apparently it wasn't in there, because I can certainly see from their side as to why they might want some sort of a limitation on what we could increase their property value by per year. And from our standpoint, if we were going to impose some kind of a cap, it would have to have some relationship to what we think are market conditions. And with this two and a half percent per annum increase that they can't oppose, it seems to me like over a nine-year period of time, the, the aggregating or the cumulative sort of effect of those annual increases is probably resulting in an increase in the overall value of the assessed market value of the property by over 30 percent. I don't know if you've made those calculations or not.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. It's, it's over, over the nine-year period, it's, it's an increase, if you look at just the minimum, two and a half percent increases from year to year, it's an increase in $31 million in market value, and that's 27 percent increase from...
Right around 30 percent.
115 to 146.
When you consider the baseline compared to the end mark.
Right.
We'd be able to raise their property value by close to 30 percent. Mr. Lindgren, you negotiated this. What are your thoughts about the appropriateness of the numbers that were used for beginning values in 2012 and 2013, and then the, the per annum increases that were negotiated?
I think, Mr. Mayor, you're asking my opinion about whether or not it's the kind of language that you could conclude is a reasonable sort of market rate type of deal in an agreement like this, and I would say it is, yes, definitely. I might also add sort of editorial, editorially, that I drafted the original language that didn't have, that limited the ability to appeal, really, because it's absolutely the most favorable to the city. But I also have to tell you that I've been a part of many of these agreements that have similar kinds of language. And one of the things that I think is particularly reasonable to the city is, is sort of this two-step process that we've proposed here, and that Simon has indicated they agree with, of the 115 and the 120 plus the 2.5 percent. So again, it's my opinion, but I think it's reasonable, it could be reasonable for you to include, conclude that it's, it's fine.
But as our attorney for our city and the residents in our community, of which you are one...
Yes, I am.
You, you deem this, your advice is that this is reasonable under the circumstances?
I do. And I think that if this had been negotiated as part of the original agreement, at least for myself, I won't speak for the city manager, but as a part of the negotiating team, I would have recommended it to you that it was a reasonable conclusion, that it is something that is, if you will, routinely or regularly agreed to in these kind of agreements.
All right. Members Sprague, you were going to say something.
Yep.
Finish my thought first.
But the inability to appeal was a material fact in our discussions the entire time. So let's make sure that that's clear. But I, I'm concerned about the, or I should say interested, in the overall aggregate benefit to the city of this agreement versus the previous one. So in the previous one, there was a two and a half percent elevator, as I understand, year to year, but the baseline was 110, going up two and a half percent per year over nine years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and now our baseline's 115, 120, and then two and a half percent after that. Where does that get us in relation to the, the previous term? How much more tax do we collect because of that?
I don't have the answer to that, but I'm going to figure it out while we're talking about this.
I didn't calculate it either, but again, it's, yeah.
Let me just put it another way. Are we collecting more or less tax from the applicant?
I think we can conclude that you would have, you would collect more. You would have a higher minimum throughout the term.
And they're proposing to retain the right to appeal any increment created over that baseline. Is that not the very increment that would be used potentially by them to write down the principal on the loan?
They are proposing to retain the right to appeal as they would normally have under their statutory rights, amounts over that. A portion of the amount that they would appeal would be the increment, not all of the amount. And so, I mean, if I understand your question correctly...
Incentivizing them to appeal the increment that would write down their loan. So now there's a, less of an incentive to claim an increment that will reduce their principal, correct?
If they were successful in appeal, there would be less increment available. And that increment is what is being used...
And that's a benefit to the city as well.
It's a benefit to the city. And, and remember, if I can add to that, that the city has security beyond the increment in the form of a letter of credit, for, you know, a promise, a shortfall agreement from the developers. So even if that increment wasn't there, the city gets paid.
So in your professional opinion, they just have given us two benefits. What would be the motive for that, other than, you know, it didn't, this agreement didn't concur with, with their lease obligations? Is that part of the motive that would drive a person that you laterally create an additional benefit for the other party?
I guess I really can't offer an opinion as to that. I mean, they probably can. What I can tell you is what I've heard, which is that, you know, their, their corporate officials did not like the fact that there was no appeal right whatsoever. You know, so they're willing to give up a couple of things in order to maintain a portion of their appeal right. But that might be a question better posed to them, with all respect.
Thank you.
Member Bennett?
Well, this is all very complex for me. I look at it, and what was proposed as a counter was the 4.3 percent increase valuation from year one to year two, and then after that, the increased step of two and a half percent. And all we've done is translated that 4.3 percent into a number. That's, that's really the only change that I see, based on what they countered with. So where we say that in year one, the value is set at 115 million, that's 4.3 percent over 110, it's roughly 4.3 percent over 110 million. So as I see it, what we've written in the proposed language pretty much matches dollar for dollar what they asked for. Would you agree?
I'm not sure I understand the question, that it matches dollar for dollar what they asked for. You mean in terms of the tax increment assistance, or?
No, the, the increase in value from year to year.
Would you, would you ask that question again?
What they say, Simon representatives have proposed an amendment. The amendment removes the bar to appealing the market valuation, but agrees to a 4.3 increase in valuation from year one to year two of the agreement.
Yes, of course.
Going from 115 for year one to 120 in year two, and then two and a half percent steps after that.
So what I'm saying is, from the original value of 110 million, we've taken that 4.3 percent increase and translated that into the amount of 115 million.
No, what they're saying is they're starting five...
Just a new start point.
They're starting at 115 instead of 110.
But it's 4.3 percent.
No.
The difference from 115 to 120 is 4.3 percent.
Their year one in the first agreement was 110. Now their year one is 115. Their year two in the first agreement was 110 plus two and a half percent. Their year two in the second agreement is 115 plus 4.3 percent, which is the 120.
Okay.
And then after that, the steps are two and a half percent.
All right.
If I may, which kind of goes to Councilmember Sprague's earlier point about two advantages to the city. If you were to look at the simple math, if it was 115 and then two and a half, the second year would be 117, 875. That's with a 4.3 increase. And then for the remaining seven years, six years, you get the two and a half percent on top of that.
Right. But I did give them that.
Manager Neil, what's the cost to us of the administrative burden of managing the appeal?
You know, that, thank you, Councilmember Sprague. I think there was some, some discussion about what the burden of, of the appeal is with, with Southdale. I had a chance to sit down with Bob Wilson, our city assessor, and discuss that. And, and in his view, and in his experience, particularly with, with Simon Properties, this is not true with all mall owners. I can tell you from experience with general growth properties in Eden Prairie, it was definitely not true. But Simon has a professional tax department in their corporate office that really engages in a lot of formal and informal dialogue with the city assessor here, I presume, and other places where they have malls. They are not the, the mall owner that just typically goes straight to tax court, which is what other mall owners do. When I asked the city assessor if, if barring these appeals would make any material difference in, in the workload of his department, he said it would not. It is, it is, it is work, of course, but it's not something that would change, you know, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have a decrease in workload if they didn't have this appeal, that they would make somebody part-time or not needed the staff that they have now. When an appeal goes to tax court, it is, it is defended or it's handled by representatives from the county attorney's office. So we're not paying separate counsel or, or separate consultants to, to represent the city in tax court. The tax, tax court representation, there is a cost to the city, but it's not just to the city, it's to all the taxing bodies that would benefit from the taxing benefit from a particular party. So there is some cost sharing that goes on. It's not very significant, but it's borne by all taxing entities, including the county, the school, the Watershed District, Metropolitan Council, et cetera.
Same thing in delay of, of receiving the tax funds. Is there a longer period to wait to receive the tax funds during this appeal, the delivery of the funds from the county, of our portion?
There, there is, but in, in the world of very large taxpayers like Simon Property Group and, and other very large taxpayers, there, there is a, a process that is a little different than there is for a typical homeowner. So they may be paying some taxes... So they may be paying some taxes, they may be putting money in escrow, and, and they may be, you know, a true, there may be a true-up period for a year from last year into the upcoming year if tax court is slow in, in getting to resolutions.
But de minimis?
De minimis. They, it's not as if they are refusing to pay all taxes because there is a dispute going on in tax court. That's not the way that they are allowed to play.
Since, since they've thrust this upon us at the 11th hour, are there any other material terms that were not discussed, or that were discussed and did not appear in the agreement that you would recommend us discussing now for inclusion?
I, I can't think of any, I, I, I can't think of any. We have really spent all of our discussion period with them on section 4.6.
For me, one of the things that comes to mind is pedestrian connectivity. And we've talked to, there was a, an idea of doing a Urban Land Institute planning process back a while back. How do we, how could we somehow secure a good faith commitment to participate in that process as part of this renegotiation? I mean, does, does somebody need to stand up here tonight and give us your, you know, because at this, at this juncture, you know, this is the last moment. It's not, we're not in a great, we are and we aren't in a great negotiating position. You know, we both want to see something happen here, but this is our last time to discuss it.
We have had some very recent discussion about that, and Mr. Hammer would probably be prepared to answer that question directly tonight. I won't presume to answer it for him, but, but knowing that that is a discussion, that is a, a subject matter that the council is interested in and could perhaps have been raised tonight, we did give them a heads up that they should be prepared to answer that question.
Okay. Mr. Lindgren, let's make one other thing clear, and that is that the proposed amendment to the agreement wouldn't restrict the city in any way from valuing the property at its true market value, it's just that Simon is agreeing that in each particular year, it's not going to contest at least a two and a half percent increase in the, in the estimated market value of that property.
That's correct, Your Honor.
We would see this as a floor, not a ceiling.
Right. Member Bennett?
Returning to the question of the transit station, Mr. Lindgren, what happens if that agreement is not finalized, the agreement between Met Council and Simon regarding the transit station? If that's not finalized by June 30th, what happens?
The, under the terms of the agreement, the transit easement has to be finalized with one, within 120 days of the signing of the agreement. So if this agreement were to be signed, say tomorrow, they would have until September. And if it wasn't agreed and acceptable to you, then the terms of the loan don't have to go forward. Remember, under the state statute that allows to be done, the loan has to close by the end of December. So I think, in my opinion, there's sufficient time between that 120-day process, and they've already been working on that. So you will find out at least two months, if you will, before the time that the loan would have to be closed.
And no funds would be dispersed until that agreement is finalized?
That is correct, and the agreement is very clear on that.
I think that's a nit, or not. Other questions for Manager Neal?
You know, we are, we are very interested in, in pedestrian movement and how, how the parking area around the shopping mall is going to be landscaped, et cetera. How, how germane is that discussion to what we're talking about here?
I'm sorry, I was looking at some language. Would you ask the question again?
Yes, I'll ask, I'm, I'll ask my question again.
Thank you.
We are, we are very interested in pedestrian movement and the landscaping, the changes outside the mall. How germane is that discussion to what we're talking about tonight? I agree we're very interested in it. We talked about it early on when we started looking at this project. We haven't talked about it so much since then. I just want to make sure that that discussion is part of what we should be talking about here.
In the, in the, I'm trying to recall the context of the, of the proposed, the scope of the proposed project is the way I was thinking of it. I don't remember if it had a large landscaping component to it or not. Maybe we need Ms. Van Dalen to come up and tell us about that, whether there is a landscaping component to the work that you're going to do. I, I recall seeing a lot of work in the mall, but I don't recall the exterior work beyond the new entrances.
So in the drawings that have been submitted for permit, there is a civil package. And in the civil package, it talks about everything from the street to the entrances of the mall. It talks about the, or it shows the pathways. Our goal from day one, outside of any of the agreements, has been to get people from the corners of our properties to our mall entrances. So in the civil documents that have been submitted for permit, you will see pathways lit, landscaped. You will see storm, we're, we're working with Nine Mile Creek Storm Tech project in part of the parking lot. Obviously, all of our mall entrances are going to be re-landscaped, but on each of the corners, you'll see pathways.
Laurie, I also remember talking about your connectivity to the medical area, the hospital, and it seems to me you had developed, if I'm not mistaken, a significant walkway in from the doctor's building in the hospital. Is that correct?
Once, they need to get across the street, and I think we actually went back to the city, because the city needs to do something on 66th, on 66th.
To get them across, right.
To get people across the street. But once they hit our property, we've addressed those issues or concerns, because it's obviously our goal with the new food, the new dining pavilion.
Right, that's, that's what I was remembering, is you telling me that you wanted them to be able to get from the medical facility to the food court.
Exactly.
Our interests are aligned on, on the circulation issue. That's, that's my whole point, is to make sure we can keep that discussion moving forward in the future.
Yeah, go ahead. And there may be, potentially, another opportunity to talk about connectivity if the Stewart Companies project goes forward. We sometimes see it in front of us, so.
Yes.
That's another possibility in terms of pedestrian connectivity and landscaping. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Lindgren, I have a question for you about the proposed language. That's where I got distracted from Member Brindle here momentarily. When I look at the underlying language in the six line down, which starts with mall property, and then the underline is, unless and only to the extent that it is greater than such agreed-upon amount, because this is going to be changing year to year, based on the cumulative effect of that 2.5 percent floor, it seems to me that we should maybe think about not using the word amount, but use some language like percent of, percentage of increase, unless you feel otherwise.
Mayor, and just thinking here, I, I guess I would offer the opinion that I think it's clear, but perhaps it could be made more clear, and if it was acceptable to Simon, one thing we could do is at the end of the underlying language, after the word amount, add something like, as determined annually.
Or you could say, according to the following schedule, and have a table.
We could put the actual amounts in each year as well, and then it'd be very specific, but otherwise, I, even if that wasn't in there, I think the amount could easily be calculated. I, I would be comfortable with.
Yeah, I think that your language is fine, too, as determined annually.
Yeah, whichever, whatever your wishes are.
All right. Other questions for Mr. Lindgren or Manager Neal? Is there a motion on this matter?
I will move it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Moved and seconded that we approve and adopt amendment number one to the Southdale Development Agreement discussion. Member Swenson?
My vote in support of this still is predicated on that we find a satisfactory arrangement with the bus facility. Two, my general personality is one that when you bring this to me at this late date, I really would like to tell you to take a walk, and that's not the appropriate thing to do. So I'm going to support it. I guess I'm disappointed, after two months, that it comes back with just days before the deadline and the last meeting that we have. I don't like being put in that position, but I think that the discussion that Josh brought forward makes me a little bit more comfortable in accepting what it is.
Other comments? Member Bennett?
I do find it curious that something that was so important to support of, of this loan slash grant, which was that there would be an end to these challenges. And we have heard tonight some information that it really wasn't so important, but then if it wasn't so important now, why was it so important then? And I am, I remain unable to find a public purpose in this. I do respectfully acknowledge that my colleagues have a different opinion, but I will not be voting for this.
I don't think it's any less important now than it was before, that we not have to see them on a recurrent basis in tax court. But I can see where they want some protection on their side of an agreement, that they know that we don't have a completely unilateral ability to raise their property values without them being able to say anything about it over a nine-year period of time. That makes some sense to me. But I think the trade-off is that we are able to raise the value of their property on a cumulative basis over that nine-year period by almost 30 percent. And nothing in the agreement precludes us from tracking a higher market value if that exists over that period of time. So while I am not real happy about it being changed at the 11th hour either, by people that we were not negotiating with, I'm still going to support it because I think it's important for our town. And that's the bottom line issue for me, is it important for Edina, and I believe it is.
Mayor, I would just concur with that and, and state that they have incented themselves to appeal the increment that can write down their loan. And to me, that's a benefit to the city, a clear benefit, because we don't want to reduce the loan principal. Obviously, we want to get the money, we give them back in tax. In addition to having, we have retained stipulated value, tax value. It wasn't just the not appealing, it was having a stipulation on what the baseline is. So yes, we've, we've lost ability to go over that baseline. On the other hand, we've incented them to appeal the very increment that can write down their loan. That part is not difficult to understand, why it would be a benefit to the city. But since it's coming to us late, and this is a, a negotiation, everyone has acted in good faith, we have a good working relationship, we want them to be successful, as you've said before, what's good for Southdale is good for the city and vice versa. I just want to, again, put that caveat out there, that I, I would appreciate and anticipate continued cooperation in making this, and I know our interests are aligned, but in making this area more pedestrian accessible. And that would include, perhaps, participating in a future planning process to discuss that more holistically. And ULI has, has talked about doing a planning process before, and since we're acting in good faith, I just ask that that be considered, and, and I anticipate that cooperation to be there in approving this.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Carried. Andrew Neal, you have the next matter regarding authorizing the staff to apply for some grant funds to complete the promenade, phases three and four.
I do, thank you, Your Honor. This council action is in front of you tonight because the state legislature this past session has changed the way that they have proposed to provide funds to local projects. Instead of, of, of a bonding bill composed of many different line items of, of an ice arena here, and a trail there, and a new community center here around the state, they really have allocated 47 and a half million dollars to the Department of Employment and Economic Development, and told that state department to go through a grant-making process and make recommendations back to them about how they would allocate this money. They have established a, a, a very quick timeframe to do, to do that. July, excuse me, I believe June 26th is their, is their deadline to submit an application. We have, would like to throw our hat in the ring for the two promenade, promenade phases. They are currently in our CIP, and for next year, and I believe the year after. We could choose any projects, this happens to be two that were, are in the CIP. We would submit them as they are proposed. You don't, in this, in this grant-making process, you don't ask for a certain amount of funding, you tell them what the project costs, and then they'll decide how to allocate the money. So that really is kind of the sense of it. We, what the council is being asked to do is to confirm for the application that the city does indeed have money available to spend on this project, should the state provide grant funding for it.
All right. Good. I'm glad you were on top of this. It's nice to be able to think about making an application for some of those funds and having the financial wherewithal to be able to provide matching funds, if that's a requirement they have.
I, I should, I should give credit to my intern, Ari Klugman. This is her work, and she was kind enough to put my name on it, so this is her first project to put in front of you tonight.
Very good.
Mayor?
Questions?
You know, this fund is going to be in high demand, what are our chances of success here? I want a, just a, a basic percentage, give me your best guess. 5%?
Nay.
There is, there's a lot of speculation that there's going to be an informal split of 50% of this money being in the Twin City metro area, 50% outside. You have a very big minor league baseball project in St. Paul that is projected to get a good chunk of it, and you have a Southwest LRT project out here that-
Small project.
Yeah, also a small project.
They're looking for like eight million.
Yeah.
Eight? Okay.
So the chances of, frankly, the chances of Edina coming out of this process with money for this project are very small, but we never know if we don't try, right?
Well, as, as a mayor always says, we expect great things out of this process from you, so. I'll expect to see the award. Thank you.
But no pressure.
If you don't ask, you don't get anything.
All right. Do we have a motion on this resolution?
Both.
Moved and seconded that we authorize the application for grant funds from the deed monies that are presently available for completion of Edina Promenade, Phases Three and Four. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Carried. Council comment to our correspondence of petitions, anything other than what's on the?
Sidewalk.
We have a petition, sidewalk petition, is there a motion to receive the petition requesting sidewalk on the south side of Interlocken? Moved and seconded, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Carried. Council comments? Member Sprague?
Ooh, I'm first.
You're the man, or the person.
We, I went to the meet on the sidewalk event this week, that was on Tuesday, at Lake Edina Park, and it was a-
That was on Tuesday at Lake Edina Park, and it was a collaboration of the summer reading program for youth with the Edina Public Schools. The Edina Resource Center was there. Dewtown was there. The police were there. They had a squad car, and Tom McKenzie and Chief Long were there. And I have a picture, there it is, some of the tables they had out. The next picture shows, those are some gals from the park department doing a program. This is actually right before a lot of people came. And as I was walking through, I noticed this area in the next photo, which is this little transitional area from that, the parking cutouts on Park Lawn adjacent to the park building and then going back towards the cul-de-sac in, on Kellogg. And then that fence there runs along the golf course. And it has been brought up before that this area would, it'd be good to connect these two areas, one for a safer route to school for the populations living back in the apartments going to Cornelia. But also, I think, for the neighborhood to be able to get through Park Lawn and easily over to Centennial Lakes and the farmer's market and all the amenities over there. So it seems to be logical that we would ask to study some type of trail connection between the two. In addition, in the next slide, I saw this area. You can see some of the, it's been marked with, there's an old cement marking of where this possible park structure would have gone at one time. And I know that there is a great need back in that Park Lawn neighborhood, but again, a benefit to the adjacent Cornelia neighborhood for park structure. Having volunteered with a lot of the, the children from the school that are looking for things to do after school, I know this has been on the radar. It synchronizes with Dewtown and helping our youth to be healthy and active, and it also addresses some, some inequities in the park system back for this area. So it made me think, think about it more, and I think tonight I would like to move a feasibility study of this trail and a park structure in the general vicinity that's shown here in the photographs.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
How does that work into the work plan? And how much staff time is needed for that?
Councilmember Rindel, Councilmember Sprague, that's a fair question. I have had some, some discussion already with Director Keprios about this question, and he has some concerns about, he has more concerns about the playground than he does the, the trail. But in terms of where, where a feasibility proposal or feasibility report might lie, it's something that we'll have to take a look at what their priority lists are and determine where it, where it would fall. I mean, they, we'd put it in the queue, but I can't tell you tonight where, how, what the timeline would that, what the timeline would be for.
I guess my stipul, you know, we're coming up on the CIP, and we'll start that process in, I see October on here, CIP workshop. So I guess my request is that the feasibility study be completed before then.
Well, and we're also coming up to your business meeting where we're going to take a look at our, at our work plans and status and, and what's in the queue and what could be programmed and reprogrammed, too.
Let's start tonight with just the feasibility study, and then when we come to the work session, we can address the priority issue. To me, this is a, is a high priority that's been out there, but it probably lends itself to further discussion, so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yep.
What, what about sending it to the park board to have them wrestle with it? Or do you think we should just take it on ourselves?
I think it should be a staff, the feasibility portion should be staff. I've talked to Director Keprios about it. It seems to be feasible. There's, the, the golf course is adjacent. They've changed the tee so that the golf balls are no longer flying in that direction, so there's not a safety hazard. They should come forward with a cost for the, the structure and any, if there are any, you know, any issues with engineering or anything else that can come forth in the feasibility, then it would, it would, I guess it would go to park board. Park board would come forward with a recommendation. It would come to us. Maybe you'll hold a hearing, public hearing, and then if it's approved, you get it in the CIP. I mean, that to me would be the logical sequence.
All right.
Just briefly, we've talked before about the utility of our master plan for the parks. We don't have one, but it would seem to me that one of the elements of that would be to assess the radius or areas that are served by the different park facilities and playgrounds in the city. And it's, it, just from looking at this area and, and seeing it on foot, walking it, it does seem that there's a gap because the next, the nearest park play facility is Cornelia School Park, and there are no, no play facilities in the Centennial Lakes Park either. So there's, there's quite a gap of space in the community in which there are really no play facilities that are friendly to use by children.
I also think that if you look at our census and the changes in the rentals of that neighborhood, they've been significant in the last number of years. We've actually rolled over a couple of different cultures there originally that started and now that are, have changed. So I, I would agree with you that this is certainly an area, it's a school district that has the highest number of free lunches. It would seem to me that that should tell us something right away that, that's our rental housing probably, and that we need good place space there. And, you know, the ability potentially to be able to schedule some of the summer park programs there within, you know, the facility that would help those kids without having to move them and pick them up. I know that we've had to, you know, use transportation to get kids to programs that can't get there. So to me, this might be a time that we need to just look at it differently, so I guess I support that.
And the staff report could prioritize one over the other, and maybe if park structure's more problematic, you go with the linkage first, so we can at least get them over to the school and to another park directly. And then the next year or two in the CIP, you do the park.
There are also different types of park, of play, of park structures, and in Midicata Vista Park just south of 39th Street, they have an open-air park structure, which is just the roof and a base, and a lot of different gatherings and, and team events get held there.
Good. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Carrie.
Thank you, Paul. I looked at living streets policy of North St. Paul. I shot you an email, Mayor, about the definition of living streets, and I wanted to read it. I thought it was great. It said, this is from the North St. Paul Living Streets Policy. "We're calling a new version of streets for North St. Paul Living Streets because the name connotes a street where people are active and nature is accommodated." Great wording. "You may hear other terms like complete streets or green streets. All these terms mean essentially the same thing. Living streets are a less expensive way to rebuild North St. Paul streets and include multiple benefits." Excellent, excellent preface. And I look forward to seeing that process, which is going on right now with the Living Streets Working Group and the ETC. There was a petition for sound wall just in the neighborhood just before the exit to 50th and Vernon, traveling south on 100. And Director Hool sent out an email to someone else who had asked about it, and I thought I would just read that because it's good information, good public information about the sound wall program at MinDOT. Do you want to just, you probably don't have that on hand, so I'll, I'll just read it. He said, "The state of Minnesota has a program for filling sound wall gaps. However, they only spend about $2 million a year, which is one sound wall a year in the entire state. They had analyzed the metro area highways and prioritized the missing gaps in question here. The area that you are located in is ranked 245th on their list." So we're only 245 years away. That's great. That's good news. And then he gave a link to the, to the website on sound walls, and then basically just said, you can, we can assess, you know, we can look at assessing back into the neighborhood, and then you have different tiers of assessment, but it's 17,000 to 19,000. It's not a cheap endeavor to assess especially to the adjacent properties. Just thought people out there ought to know that. And do you have any, any comments at all about, about that?
The only comment I do have is that we, we did have a, a neighborhood just south of Minnehawke Creek along Highway 100, just over here up, just north of Vernon. And actually, MinDOT actually reprioritized their rankings, and they're now fifth on the list. So we're looking at within five years of that neighborhood, and so we'll be notifying the group that we've been working closely with this last winter about, about that, that new option. Because we had met with them a few weeks ago and, and gave them the, what the cost would be of upwards of $17,000 of special assessment. So I think that's some great news for, for that neighborhood. And I've asked the question of MinDOT is, is if we can push up the schedule of that and possibly fund the project and they get repaid at year five when they had it on their list. So they're, they're kicking that around over at MinDOT right now.
I appreciate your, your partnership with them on that. It also made me think about Grandview and, you know, all of the transportation infrastructure changes that might occur, and would that be another opportunity for us to revisit? You know, you've got the Richmond Hills neighborhood there with no sound walls. Well, we've got some pretty significant gaps in these adjacencies to residential neighborhoods off of 100, so just triggered that thought. I see that 70th Street is getting its landscape package. It looks beautiful. I'm curious about, there have been some correspondence about queue lengths, especially people at the corners, and I, I know we just have collected data on the street. Tell us about the adjustments that can be made from an engineering perspective to change the flow in the queue lengths, and also about anything else upcoming, like the, the variance request to MinDOT about the no turn on red and so on. Anything that might affect the, the traffic patterns on the street?
Right. I have, I have no new news on, on like the, the right turns and item, and as far as the queue lengths, we're still, us and our consultants still looking at that. We solve the issue with a couple of the driveways just west of West Shore of them getting in and out, so. At this point, I don't have any new news on, on what we're studying down there.
After you get the data, how long does it take you to remodel the timing of the signalization and all those other elements?
That's probably a, a couple of weeks or so. That same group is actually crunching numbers on France Avenue and, and looking at the, the traffic flows on France Avenue for our Stakeholder Two meeting, which is next Tuesday night at, at our Public Works Facility to look at those intersections. So I would suspect once they get through that, that besides all the other stuff that Carrie has them, we're looking at, that they probably would be able to juggle some of these numbers and come back. So about two to three weeks or somewhere in there.
So the point is for, for the people out there is that these streets can be adjusted? The engineering can be adjusted on the streets that will, that will alter the traffic patterns once the streets are rebuilt and you have more controls in place to allow you to do this?
The traffic signals give you some adjustments. We still look at the, the speeds and triggering, triggering the traffic signals to slow down the vehicle. So it's kind of a fine line of, as far as how much you actually can adjust it and, and how much traffic you're then going to be sending elsewhere in the system.
So it might be a tweak more than a major adjustment?
Right.
Okay. Fair enough. And then I, I sent a bike video out to the council. It was a, a video Peter Kelly had first posted on his Facebook page for the Bike Edina Task Force. And it showed various facilities in different parts of Amsterdam, all these different cities. Some were already bicycle-friendly, some were very car-centric, and we're going through this transition. And there were people in the film that were touring these facilities from various parts of the United States. I found it fascinating. And I wonder what it would cost us to send Director Hool overseas to check out these facilities. I mean, it must be, honestly, it must be incredible, an incredible tour, an opportunity for somebody looking to do something more innovative in the United States where that's not necessarily the automatic model. So just a thought. Thanks.
Still on 70th, I know we've heard from Mr. Bab Wayne about trying to get out of his driveway, and I asked you at one point, I think in an email, can we ever put something up that says you can't block somebody's driveway right by an intersection, or does that never work?
That, I looked at that request and, and looking at, just to the west where we have do not block the intersections, and people block them all the time, so I would suspect that, that would not work.
Okay. I was just, I know you looked, and he already had the ability to back his car out so that he could go forward exiting, correct?
That's right. He does that turnaround.
So it's trying to turn in that he has probably the most trouble.
Right.
Okay. And then you and I had a talk, but I wanted you to, to, to tell everyone what we did when I, I brought up the idea of using, if it was possible to ever use TIF funding to redo the bridge over Minnehawke Creek on the sides of the street on France Avenue, because, you know, we talk about working at making things look better. We have some metal bars that look like really ugly railings, and you've said that currently, well, you, I'll let you speak for yourself.
Well, actually, Hennepin, Hennepin County has a, has a program that they're putting together for beautification of their roadways that, that municipalities can apply for. They don't have the program in place yet, but it should be in the next few weeks, because we, we had our email quite a few weeks ago telling us not to, to send them emails on their, on their, their program until they actually figure out a, a process for it. So I would suspect once that comes out is that we would apply for some funding to, to beautify. And what Councilmember Swenson's referring to is the railings that are along France Avenue as it, Minnehawke Creek goes underneath France Avenue. And there are some railings that are kind of tipped over and looks really-
They would look like modern art if one enjoyed railings that are bent and at an angle and really not very attractive, but modern art would be it.
Just, just north of 50th, or south of 56th Street, between 56th and 58th Street.
It just, when we work at things in our city, and I know that I've heard of things before that are, that I hear from real estate agents all the time, that they never bring people into, to show houses like in Country Club or South Harriet Park coming off the crosstown at France. Now, I can't do anything about the first few blocks there, but I could, I looked at those railings and I thought, you know, we can do something about these railings. So, and luckily, Engineer Hool always is very supportive of the beautifying ideas. So thank you. The other question I had is we got this, and it referenced Southdale, and I'm really confused as to what, have we passed it on to them? Because it doesn't seem like something that we work on, which is daycare in a public facility, correct? Or in a private facility?
That was unsolicited mail.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
AKA junk mail.
Good. Member Bennett.
I had some correspondence and a telephone conversation with a resident who lives next to new construction. I forwarded it with her permission earlier today to Director Teague and to City Manager Neal, and wonder if we could have some information. The situation in brief is that it is a narrow lot. It's a front, the new construction, new house with a front-loading garage, and the resident has been allowing her new neighbor to use her driveway for access to their walkout backyard, and now wonders how long this is going to go on because her neighbor has now installed a retaining wall, and it doesn't appear that there's any access to the backyard except through the house. Is there any, what are her, what is her ability to, she's been, she's given verbal permission in the past. There's never been any written permission sought or written permission given, and, and the retaining wall was just installed on the last day.
Revoke the permission.
I, I encouraged her to possibly send a letter to her neighbor. Yeah, it wasn't, it isn't a city matter, I understand, but her question was two things. First of all, she wanted to know what she could do to handle the situation, since it, again, it had been a specific permission given for specific things, like getting a bobcat into the backyard. And now there seems to be an assumption. The second thing is she would like a call to people's attention that there are problems with new construction on narrow lots, one of them being that depending on how large the house is and what they do with the setbacks and what the topography is, that the new owners- may not have the ability to access their own property from their own property, which seems to be the intent of the setback code.
Kerry, are you seeing that issue come up?
I haven't seen this type of circumstance before. I'll go and take a look and see how that's operating out there, but not being able to access your own backyard seems like an issue certainly.
Yep. And if you need any help locating the home. I think you and I have corresponded before on it, so you should have the address. So that's the city question I have. I've been out of town in Santa Barbara and for niece's graduation and note again the beautiful pedestrian facilities that they have there. I do note that just as in Minnesota, maintenance, maintenance is an issue. They may not have snow removal, but if you have beautiful mosaics on your sidewalks, eventually stuff does need repair and replacement. But there does appear to be a culture, a lot of investment in it. One thing that I did note that's not on our agenda for this evening, but will be coming to us, is I noted on this visit a lot of memorial and commemorative plaques on park benches and trees. They were quite small, about so big or smaller and also quite beautiful and quite interesting. And I didn't find them distracting. I found them kind of telling the story of the place. One of the plaques under a tree at Alice Keck Garden Memorial Park, Alice Keck Park Memorial Garden. One of the trees, one of the plaques was commemorating the engagement of a couple. This was the spot where the proposal took place. So, anyway, just those observations and it was otherwise a great visit.
Good. Member Vindal.
In May, we as a city council passed a, or adopted a resolution to become part of the Southwest Twin Cities Yellow Ribbon Coalition. And the organizational effort on this is ongoing. The first organizational meeting for all six cities in this chapter will take place on June 28th at the Edina Senior Center. So we will have members of the National Guard there and retired military and active military to help to put this together and create our network. And basically, we've got a pre-planning meeting coming up this Friday, but the idea is that each of the six cities representatives and people from each of the six cities would sit together and formulate their own action plan and their steering committee and determine who is going to be their main contact person. So meet up in that meeting and sit in groups in that meeting so they can have their table conversations and get organized. So that's coming up on the 28th and then, let's see here.
What time of the day is that?
Evening, 7 to 9. At the Senior Center in the big room. And basically, it's to identify and connect leaders in key areas. Then the key areas are defined by the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Organization, which is an umbrella organization nationally and in our state. So it's city leadership, veterans organizations, service clubs and local military support. It's education, youth programs, community education. It's public safety and judicial, businesses and employers, faith-based medical, social services and volunteer groups. So those are the key areas that basically, we'll put together an inventory of what each city has and these inventories then would be put in a brochure form, I suppose, and be available at city hall and grocery stores, churches, wherever people gather. And when they see the Yellow Ribbon, someone in need of something, knowing that Yellow Ribbon provides services that they and their family can access, would take that. The population of active and inactive reserve military and retired military is protected in data privacy. So they all self-identify if they identify at all. And so having this information available and having that Yellow Ribbon insignia possibly on the police cars, letting people know that Edina is a Yellow Ribbon city, then tells people that information would be available. Let's see here, two more things. I received an email from a neighbor today, not about the trees, but about neighborhood pedestrian access to Braemar Park. Getting from our neighborhood across Valley View to Braemar Park is difficult. And so people would like to go there. They would like to have their kids go there. They'd like to walk there. They'd like to bike there rather than get in their car and drive there. And so, looking for ways that we can provide better and safe pedestrian access from this area, Iroquois Hills is the neighborhood and it's got quite a history, actually. It was Eden Prairie once and the neighbors appealed and got it to be part of Edina. But, but anyway, that has, that's being requested. And then lastly, I met with the new community engagement person from Alina Hospitals and Clinics. Her name is Allison Pence. And there was a grant application out there, so I whipped up a project and got the grant. So, we've got, it's for pedometers. And so, we're gonna, I've created an activity, kind of a fire up your feet activity for people and then I'll make these pedometers available and we'll compete and see who went farther and how long it took them, how many people they took with them and what the purpose of their walk was, et cetera, and have some fun with some prizes and get people walking. So, so that's what I have.
Yeah, that was good. Scott and I met with some of the owners from 50th and France back on the 8th of June. That resulted in a meeting getting set again for the 13th of June that Wayne and Scott were at. I was there for a bit and maybe as part of your report, Scott, you can talk a little bit about status of parking at 50th and France or Wayne, you can talk about how they're going about revising the plan and hopefully reducing the cost. Also went to a ribbon cutting that morning out at a new store called Allure in Galerie. Lingerie at 9:30 in the morning was...
Open light?
Right on top of it. And then, one of our great longtime residents passed away and the memorial service was on the 8th as well, Mel Moody. One of the Moody Brothers, lawyer downtown at Gray Plant for years, been retired and had health difficulties the last few years. Had a beautiful service for him over at Mount Olivet and condolences to his son Paul and his daughter Mary. Met with Tim Rudnicki over in Morningside that same night, wanted to show me this, and there's been an ongoing dialogue with the city attorney and Scott Neil about a house is being built basically at, how do you pronounce it? Is it Little or Latell? And Lynn? Lynn and Little, Lynn and Latell.
And Mrs. Little was one of, actually built houses. She was a...
So, something, something is, maybe Kerry knows what's going on over there. I've been over there twice in the last week and it doesn't look like there's any building activity. I don't know if it's on a stop work order. There's a house being built next to a piece of property. It's a park. They've filled in part of the park with about 10 feet of fill in one location. They've taken down trees in that, on that property, which is city property. They've got a big mound of dirt fill in on the property that abuts the city property. It looks to me like it's over the property line on what might be eventually their retaining wall. They've got an extraordinary retaining wall on the other side, but nothing on our side. And it just strikes me that, I don't know what happened there, but they could never have gotten away with what they did on private property on our property. And it's, it's not good. It's quite a scar over there in that neighborhood and I don't know what's going on. I don't know how it happened, but I'm not sure it should have happened and I'd like an explanation. I think the neighbors deserve it too, as to what the heck happened over there and what are we going to do to make that builder restore that park? It's not a good situation, so I'm not going to look too deeply tonight at the staff level, but I'd just tell you to drive over there and take a look at it. It is not good. So, on the 11th, I had breakfast with a guy from Transit for Liveable Communities who's been going to the TAC meetings. The Transportation Advisory Board has the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, which is mostly engineers. And they're going to make a recommendation to the TAB, I don't know if it's going to be tomorrow or not, that some of the emphasis be changed on what we look at in terms of projects that need to be done in this limited or this constrained budgetary world that we live in. If they want to do more A minor arterials or collector distributors, what's at risk here is if they shift, if they convince the TAB to shift policies, our trail project could be at risk. Because they're talking about a couple of trail projects being eliminated, so it's something we really need to keep our eyes on.
Our bike trail?
Our Edina bike trail. And there's one other trail down in Dakota County that's at risk. No. Nine Mile Creek.
Oh, that makes no sense.
So, we got to watch this carefully and I'll see what goes on tomorrow with TAB relative to this, but...
Let's know what we need to do.
Yeah. That's, so...
It's important because it took a lot of work and it put a lot of people through our community and a lot of angst and I think it's important not to jump back and forth.
It's not just the city, it's a regional connection as well. I mean, that completes the entire system east to west, that linkage.
What I got out of the conversation so far was that the conversation at the TAC has been about whether to switch to sort of a roads and bridge emphasis and forget about the non-motorized emphasis because of the limited budgets that exist. And no one knows what's happening with the reauthorization at the federal level, so, but we've got to be vigilant about this and I'll keep my eyes on it as best I can and Wayne, you should be watching too. Maybe talk to some of your contacts on the TAC like Carl Keel from Bloomington and see what's going on. Get a more technical explanation than I got from the person from Transit for Liveable Communities. Because he came to meet with me because he was concerned about Edina and the trail. I thought it was very generous of him to meet with me, so. Historical Society had a fundraiser on the night of the 14th. They've kind of taken over for the Kiwanis Club. It was over at the Performing Arts Center and they had the Peterson family. And what a great bunch of musicians that family is. So that was fun to be part of that and help kick it off. And then I think, I think it was Joanie that just raised the issue indirectly of something that we've talked about before, but we really haven't gotten after it. And Kerry, I don't know if the planning commission is looking at this or not, but that question we're having to face more and more, how much house can you build on a 50-foot lot? How much house should you be able to build on a 50-foot lot? So is anybody looking at that at the planning commission?
That's not on our...
Not on your radar?
On our list right now, nope. It's, it's not.
I might suggest Manager Neil or somebody, meeting with the builders that are doing a good job with mass around town, because they will have some ideas on that. Talking about ridge lines and things like that. I think you'd get some pretty good information for free from people that are doing it right. So it might not hurt to have a meeting or two in that vein of conversation.
Is that... I would say those are good conversations, but if that, I'm not sure that's what you're suggesting.
It doesn't get to the question that we really haven't answered in the context of the work that we've done on resetting our code, I don't think. We've done a pretty good job of defining how much house you can build on a lot other than a 50-foot lot in terms of height, lot coverage, but I still feel that as we see more and more of these requests come forward to divide a 100-foot piece of property into two 50-foot lots, we really haven't figured out very well how to maintain neighborhood context and still allow people to build in a modern way on that size lot.
Even without subdivisions, there are a number, a number of 50-foot lots in the city, particularly in the northeast quadrant and I think probably also in west Minneapolis Heights. And so the rebuild and Pamela Park neighborhood...
And some areas of Country Club.
Yes, yes. So it is a, it's a question that's going to arise in a number of neighborhoods, whether or not lots are subdivided.
The march to East of Edina is not going to cease either, I can tell you right now from a demand perspective. I just ran some numbers for a bank today and of the, of the properties, I wish I had that piece of paper with me, but of the properties, active, sold properties in 2012, 900,000 above in School District 273, two-thirds of them were in ZIP Code 55424. And just anecdotally, the demand for South Harriet Park, Gulf Terrace Heights, all the non-Country Club, it's just basically we've pushed that demand over because they can't get their housing need met in Country Club. That's not the scale of the house that they want or the floor plate or whatever. And it's just pushing into the adjacent neighborhoods.
It's all the neighborhoods that people can move around on by foot if they want to and have a pedestrian lifestyle. And they might be a little bit further from 50th and France, but it's still walkable, 10 minutes or so.
But, one control is far, another one has to do with ridge height and things like that. And that's why I was saying, if you talk to builders that are out there like Great Neighborhood Homes or Refined or people that are working in those areas, they might have good perspectives to share on how do you maintain the integrity in the final product and still achieve our goal of, you know, reduce, you know, not massing and destroying that fabric.
There are some construction management issues as well, because if you have a narrow lot, the porta potty is probably not going to fit in the foot, it's not going to fit on the lot. And so we see them, we've seen them on the sidewalk, we've seen them on the boulevard and their public sidewalks. Our staff has been very good about getting them moved when they've been reported, but what do they, you know, they shouldn't be there in the first place.
All right, good. That's it for me. Manager Neil.
Just a quick report on the 50th and France parking ramp issue, because this one has kind of taken a new direction. You know, when we had our joint work sessions with the ownership group, we had been talking about some pretty significant investment in new parking ramp and significant improvements to the south ramp. And as we, as the group kind of, as that project did not seem like it had the support of the ownership group at the work session, the whole, the large ownership group. We had a chance to sit down again with the smaller ownership group and begin looking at alternatives. They've identified some alternatives, some smaller projects. They believe that we can achieve some level of greater parking access and parking availability by better managing the assets that we already have, by essentially better control over where employees park there compared to where customers park at 50th and France. But also, they've been quite interested in the city going forward with the dynamic parking management signage and really directing, directing some of this management at customers so they can better figure out where they want to park. Not only, you know, not only while they're in the district itself, but as they're on the way into the 50th and France district. So, Director Hool is pursuing some options there and looking at the different ways we can do that. So essentially what this means is that that kind of scaled down approach to the project seems to be making some headway and moving ahead and I think we'll be back in front of the council, I hope, late summer with a different proposal that will... proposal that will, will look scaled down.
Can I make a comment? Is part of that conversation with them changing that contract area that's in the lower level of the south ramp?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if we're going to put in signs and things like that, we're looking at a way of trying to, because the south ramp seems to be our worst ramp as far as, okay, so they're willing to give up contract parking?
I don't know if we've had that conversation, but we'll be bringing that up.
Yeah.
I'm interested in them giving up contract parking. Could I restate it then?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
We had prepared to raise that issue with them. The only other thing I have on my list is to let you know, our next council meeting will be July 17th. The work session that night is the, is the business meeting, our first quarterly business meeting. And we are getting things prepared for that already in terms of how we're going to, what we're going to go over with you in terms of budget and finance and how we're going to depict work plan progress, and we're looking forward to it. That's all I've got.
All right, we've got a little more work to do. Anything else for the council meeting? All right, council meeting stands adjourned. And we will now call to order the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. And roll call, please, Ms. Mencken.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Brendel.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague.
Here.
Commissioner Swenson.
Here.
Chair Havlin.
Here. We've got some minutes of January 17, 2011. Is there a motion?
So move.
Got a motion in the second to approve the regular meeting minutes of the HRA on January 17, 2011. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay. Carried. And then we have basically a repeat of the discussion we had earlier as a council regarding the amendment number one to the Southdale redevelopment agreement. Is there a motion on that matter from the HRA standpoint?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say nay.
Nay.
Carried. Any other business for the HRA? HRA stands adjourned.